Ladies and gentlemen, I will call to order the Arvada City Council meeting for today, February 10, 2025. I will call upon Councilmember Davis for the roll call in moment of silence.
Please join me in a moment of silent reflection, please. I invite you to join council in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis. Ms. Rush, if you will do the roll call.
Mayor Simpson?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Mormon?
Here.
Councilmember Ambrose?
Here.
Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer?
Here.
Councilmember Marriott?
Here.
Councilmember Rupert?
Here.
Thank you. Next, we have the approval of the amendments for January 22, 2025, as well as the executive session. Are there any notes to the or amendments to the minutes? Seeing none, those stand approved. Next, we will have a proclamation for Black History Month. I will call upon Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Your Honor, you also have minutes for the January 27 meeting, so I just want to make sure we get that on the record.
Thank you very much. Are there any additions for the January 27 meeting? Those also stand approved. Thank you, Ms. Morris. Now, Councilmember Pfeiffer, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. Is Thomas Williams here? All right, why don't you come on up to the podium? And you're with Red Rocks Community College, so you're here to accept the proclamation we're going to make this month, so thank you for being here tonight.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas, the month of February is nationally recognized as Black History Month, a time to honor and reflect on the significant contributions and achievement of African-Americans throughout history; and whereas, Black History Month provides an opportunity to recognize and celebrate the rich culture, heritage, history, and diversity of the African-American community; and whereas, African-Americans continue to make remarkable contributions to the field of art, music, literature, politics, science, education, and civil rights, shaping the culture, social, and economic landscape of the United States; and whereas, Arvada is a community that values inclusivity and respect for all people, and we encourage all residents to reflect on and engage in making Arvada a more inclusive place through learning, dialogue, and fostering mutual respect for all; and whereas, we are proud of many continued partnerships with educational and cultural institutions in Arvada like Red Rocks Community College that continue to invest in the growth and development of a diverse, equitable, and vibrant future of our community, for our community. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and city council for the city of Arvada that the month of February 2025 be designated as Black History Month, and encourage all residents to reflect upon and celebrate the achievements, contributions, and history of African-Americans. And it was dated this 10th day of February 2025, signed by the mayor and all of council. So I'll bring this down to you.
Thank you. And we'd also like to invite you to say a few words if you wish.
Okay, to Mayor Simpson, the council members, staff members, and community representatives. On behalf of Red Rocks Community College, I want to express our deepest gratitude to Arvada City Council for their meaningful proclamation on a Black History Month. This recognition reaffirms the importance of acknowledging, celebrating, and learning from the profound contributions of Black individuals throughout history, both nationally and within our own communities. At Red Rocks, we are committed to fostering an environment where diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging are not just ideas, but principles that shape our institution and empower our students. Black History Month is a time to reflect on the resilience, achievements, and ongoing struggles of Black Americans, and it serves as a reminder that education is one of the most important and powerful tools in the pursuit of justice and progress. By creating spaces where every individual feels valued and heard, we strengthen our collective futures. We appreciate this proclamation as a step towards continuing dialogue and action. Together, we can ensure the lessons of history inspire future generations to build a more just, equitable, and inclusive society.
Thank you very much. We'll do a quick photo. Come this way. Thank you. Thank you very much. It's our honor for you to be here with us this evening, and thank you to everybody at Red Rocks Community College. You're a tremendous asset to our community.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. With that, we have public comment on issues not scheduled for the agenda. This is the three-minute limit. I will quickly note that we always ask that you provide your name and address when you come up to the podium for the public record. We also ask that you keep your public comment directed to us at the council. We aren't able to respond, but if there is a request or a genuine question, somebody will be able to get back to you. And I'll just go ahead and kick it off with Mr. Jim Morgan.
Jim Morgan, 7551 Oak Street. I want to talk about addresses, but before I address addresses, I would just like to say, coincident to it being Black History Month and coincident to the proclamation, I happen to be reading the autobiography of Booker T. Washington, and I recommend it to all of you if you have not yet read it. It's a great book about a great man. What I want to address is the requirement for giving an address when someone comes up here to speak. And I just wonder what the value really is, and if it's something that is really essential. And the reason is, it's possible that someone who is timid might feel intimidated by having to give their own address. In other words, they may feel like they're doxing themselves, as it were. And so I wonder about the real value of that, and if that's something that you could consider dropping from your requirements. Also, in the times that I have had opportunity to attend or view the meetings, there have been times when people have not given their addresses. They've mentioned their neighborhood, but not given an address. There have been one or perhaps two occasions where someone didn't even give an address and yet continued to speak. And I'm pretty sure that there is at least one time where someone gave a false address. And so if there's no value to this, why require it? And if there is value to it, do you actually follow up, or does anyone actually follow up, to see if people are being honest about giving their address? So I think overall, the value to the city, the value to those people who would like to speak and may have some input of great value would be more free to do so if they didn't have to give their address, if they didn't have to feel like they were revealing themselves to the public in general. So I'd just like you to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. I do request that there's no applause in chambers, and though we don't usually respond, I will note, if you are uncomfortable giving your address, you may give your neighborhood, your council district. That is always an option. This is a council request for the public record. However, be assured, this is not, we have the forms here, and so it's not a legal requirement. So please, I want everyone to feel comfortable and safe, and thank you, Mr. Morgan. All right. Next, we have Ross Reinhardt.
Hello, council. I'm here today to speak about the disturbances caused by the homeless population in Old Town, and how it affects my family, and I'm sure many other families with young children like mine. I'm born and raised in Colorado, attended the Colorado School of Mines, and my family moved here in 2019. My wife grew up in Arvada, graduated from Arvada West High School, so we're proud to call this city our home. We have three young children, four, seven, and 10. And like I said, we love Arvada. We support the community in any way we can. I spend most of my free time coaching Arvada youth in baseball, basketball, and flag football. We also love the Old Town area. It seems to be an integral part of our city. The shops, the restaurants are a great thing for this community. It's just, it's a, it's a special place in Arvada. However, my family and many others in our circle are growing extremely frustrated by the constant disturbances that we receive each time we go to Old Town now with the homeless population. An example I want to give to you, and the reason I'm here tonight, is last week, I took my three kids to one of the arcades in Old Town, and as I'm getting out of my car, taking my four-year-old daughter out of her car seat, two homeless men start running towards our car, screaming profanities, to the point where I had to shut the door. I had to tell my two sons, seven and 10, get back in the car as I evaluated the situation. They were across the street, they yelled, they went back, but as I looked down the street, the streets littered with debris, trash, shopping carts, and numerous other homeless people seemingly making the front of the library their home for the night. This shouldn't be happening. I shouldn't feel unsafe or afraid to bring my family into that part of the city. And my ask to you is this simple, you know, as our elected officials, you know, please fix this. The problem's getting worse, and I think we need to look out for our families, our businesses, and our community. And please just hold the people that are bringing this population into our, into our town accountable. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have John Cooper.
How are you this evening? Nice to be here, and I appreciate your giving us an opportunity to speak like this. My name is John Cooper. I live at 8436 Newcombe Street in Arvada, and I'm pleased to be able to speak about your efforts to try to help those that the very gentleman before me spoke of, the unhoused who need our support. And I speak mostly, well, not mostly at all, I'd be so broad-minded. I speak to the fact that you have now, for the second time apparently, ended your efforts with an attempt to put a navigation center, which could provide wraparound services to people who need those things. And I think that's extremely disappointing. I saw in the, in the Arvada press that you apparently failed in 2022 to adjust that to issue two, and that most recently, a neighborhood of folks came and petitioned you about their concerns about the placement at the Early Learning Center. Certainly, I suppose we can understand that. There's always this phenomenon of not in my neighborhood, or backyard, if you would. But I would ask that the council take serious and make a recommitment to addressing this issue with a plan that is actionable and with a timeline for that plan, so that this community does not have to experience the impact downtown or in neighborhoods. I live near Two Ponds. I've walked through that area, and I've seen people who have set up a little camp to take care of themselves. We can do better. These people get up in the morning, maybe not the same way that you do, but I want to say this. I really would appreciate it if, as council members, you do not think, as was echoed from this chamber, of these people as wretched people. That was the most disheartening thing, as a member of this community, to hear that a council member said in these chambers. That just is unacceptable. So please, take a commitment, put it in place, and work with regional partners to put a plan in place. Look to what they are doing in Lakewood. Look to what the Warren Village has done. Look to what Hope House has done. Go so far as to take a trip to Houston, where housing first gave people the security to move forward and get other services at the same time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Once again, I politely request that we refrain from applause. One of the reasons we do that is we want to keep this as an open and safe space for everybody, whatever their viewpoint. And I understand viewpoints can differ, and that is wonderful. That's what makes democracy thrive. But we want to make sure that everybody in the crowd feels safe to be able to talk, whatever their viewpoint may be. So next, we have Dana Ellis.
Hi. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. My family and I moved to Arvada in early 1997 with our three children and raised them here. I served as a public school principal for 18 years in the city of Arvada. Allendale Campbell, and both of the schools are now closed, so Oberon and North Arvada, I guess, maybe should be on notice. I retired from JFCO in 2015 and found myself doing other work, and I'm now the principal at Shrin of St. Anne. And I'm here because we do have concerns in downtown Arvada. They've been growing over time. My school sits maybe 1,000 feet, if that, from a homeless services center. And I appreciate that we support people like that. There are people that are like people in my family and like in your family who need help. But what's happening, and I've observed for this first six months of school, is an increase of acts just outside my school fence, with people trying to give my children items that should never, ever happen, including on Friday afternoon. We have to do something. We should be protecting schools, whether they're private or public. I understand that Early Learning Center, that used to be Camel's, as he just said, not in my community. Well, they're in my community, where my school is. And I have no problem helping the people at the Rising Help People, but I need your help in helping you helping take care of my children. We have parents who are Arvadans, longtime multi-generational families, who don't feel safe with their kids at a Catholic school because of what's going on around us. I mean, I have a lot of experience and a lot of training. I'm doing the best I can, but I can't do it without more help. I call, the police come. When the people are on our property, they say they'll give them a trespassing summons or a notice that they can't come back. I don't ever get any names. I don't ever get any information. I'd like to know what we're doing with that follow-through. I do think people should be treated with respect wherever they are, and when they're not in their right minds, huffing and vaping and freebasing and shooting up right in front of five-year-old children, I think it's a problem. It needs to stop. Otherwise, we're going to become like every other big city around here, and when we look at the economic impacts and the cultural impacts on our city, we all lose. So thank you for listening. I know it's not an easy solution. I hope it's one that can love many people, but it's not right what my children are seeing on a daily basis in downtown Arvada. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mindy Moore.
Good evening, Mayor Simpson and councilmembers. Mindy Moore, 11570 West 70th Place. Over the past few weeks and months, and even tonight, you've heard from across our city about the need to address homelessness in Arvada. You've heard from neighbors, neighborhoods, small businesses, and Old Town advocates, and it was also a key issue from community surveys. And back in 2024, you made it one of your council's strategic goals. With your recent vote to sell the Early College of Arvada rather than create a navigation center there, and today's study session, talking about the uncertainties, what you're going to do with the first navigation center parcel you bought on Marshall Street, that leaves us residents asking, what is the plan to honor the city's commitment to help with the North JFCO Navigation Center and shelter? You have a well-written draft homelessness action strategy, which I, as Councilmember Pfeiffer said earlier today, I hope, needs to be finalized. You have temporary housing programs underway now at Suburban Studios. You have two great homeless navigators, Hudson and Alex, who, by the way, just made a wonderful podcast for Inside Arvada about the realities of being homeless, talking about people they work with who their IDs are lost or stolen constantly, and how long it takes to get an ID, even just to get a job. You have willing regional partners. At least Jefferson County has still reserved $3 million from the previous ARPA funds for a North Navigation Center. However, we just keep hearing, well, council feels more community education and buy-in is needed. Please, please, consider an expedited, parallel track of action and move forward, as we're begging you. With your regional partners, maybe create a navigation center site selection team, and have them develop draft site selection criteria. You can evaluate the Marshall Street property or other properties that may be available in North JFCO. At the same time, in parallel to that, do more resident education and solicit feedback. You have a large number of Arvada residents, I'm sure, who have already said they want to be kept informed through that homelessness response email list that you created last year, I think, with the town hall that was held. Why not send them that Inside Arvada podcast I just mentioned to help educate them? Why not start a few small neighborhood educational meetings so residents can learn true causes of homelessness, navigation center concepts? It needs to be near public transportation. It needs to have 24/7 shelter and a place for people to store their belongings. This could be similar to the training that APA did last week with a panel of experts. Then ask your now-educated residents for feedback on the draft site selection criteria, your plans, and then you can promptly move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Brooke Velazquez.
Hello. Brooke Velazquez, 54, 5464 Field Street. Sorry, I'm nervous. So I want to address homelessness that we have here in Arvada and just, you know, around the world. I'm a full-time student at Metropolitan State University. I'm getting my bachelor's in social work, and I'm in my third semester. And what I've been really taking away from school is the lack of empathy that we have. You guys are in position to change what we see out there once we walk out of this door, okay? And I feel if you walking out this door and you don't see something wrong, and you don't feel like you need to make a change, then you need to look in the mirror and work on your self-empathy, because those are people's brothers, sisters, daughters, and sons. You guys can make a change. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Barbara Dre.
Thank you for allowing all this public comment and for everything that you have been doing with the homeless crisis, although, as we've heard, it's just not enough. I wanted to share a story because maybe some of you are wondering why I'm so passionate about this issue. You know, when I was three years old, I was homeless, with my older brothers and my single mom, who recently fled my father due to domestic violence. We were homeless for over a year, bouncing from home to home to maintain our safety. And it was services like navigation that helped us get back on our feet. My mom applied for WIC and SNAP for the first time. The Salvation Army delivered us Christmas gifts each year. My best memory is of getting this stuffed bunny from some random stranger for Christmas. Why am I telling you this? Because this isn't just faceless people. They're not just a statistic. They're not just somebody who's freebasing in front of the library. There are many people who are experiencing homelessness who come from Arvada, who had homes, who had apartments, lost their jobs, fled domestic violence, had a breakup in the family, lost their, their home due to medical expenses. This is real, and we need to do something about it. Now, I've met with several community members. I met with the police department to learn about the core team. I met with Don Wick to learn about the history. You know that we have been working on this issue for 10 years in the city of Arvada, according to Don? You know, they have a plan. I don't know why you keep thinking we need to have more community forums and research, because they actually know. They've hired two navigators. We have a core team, but it's not enough. We need a navigation center. And why did we find that out? Because the city council, or the city of Arvada is a members of Heading Home, which is a coalition of service providers and municipalities in JFCO. They've written a report. They made their recommendations, and our previous mayor approved it, along with you all, to create a navigation center in North JFCO. We need this emergency shelter. We need these services. These are humans first, and I urge all of you to go volunteer in some of these homeless organizations that serve our homeless in Arvada. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Dan Reichert.
Good evening, folks. My name is Dan Reichert. I live on West 74th Place. I'm a businessman who calls Arvada home before this chapter of my life. I lived in and saw poverty in many places across the Middle East and Africa as an Army Special Forces officer. I've literally lived in the poorest country in the world. I'm a nonprofit board member and a person who supports organizations that tackle critical problems like lethal means suicide prevention and veteran homelessness. I come to you tonight as a father of two kids attending Shrin of St. Anne School, where I also helped Dana, our great principal, with our Dads on Duty program. We need your help. Living in the Bay Area from 2016 to 2018, we quickly watched the city we loved, my wife's hometown, die before our eyes. Many businesses, including my own, moved their headquarters. Families stopped going into the city, and eventually moved to places like Arvada to build their lives. When we settled in Arvada in 2018, Old Town was a place that we cherished. We came to Old Town often for all the great events, and while we were, while we're still here, two to three times a day between school and practices, we've actively stopped doing this. Honestly, our motto now is get in and get out. A few reasons have driven this radical change for our family. During school, we've had multiple instances of violence and open drug use. In one instance, an unhoused woman in an altered state tried speaking to our kids, sat down, did drugs in front of our kids, and then tried handing them something through the fence. In another incident, as our school was being let out, a lockdown was initiated, as our great Arvada police officers were seen moving into Old Town and exiting vehicles with guns drawn. We were later told they were responding to a homeless incident with shots fired. And just last week, as Dana mentioned, we had a homeless person handing things to our kids through the fence, and then telling them that there was more in her car. We've had Dads on Duty that has found needles, pipes, drugs, et cetera. We've walked from school to get ice cream and been openly harassed. We've been carrying Narcan in our car, just in case. The time for actions now. I echo the earlier sentiment. Let's stop thinking about the problem. As parents, we're tired of wondering if our kids are safe at school in Old Town. I really appreciate Arvada PD stepping up patrols this week, but there's a clear issue not being addressed. I implore you, as our elected leaders, to stop thinking and take action. Stop allowing and funding homeless services in Old Town, especially 500 feet from our school, 347 feet, to be exact. Fund navigation programs. They give people who want help the help they need. Don't fund programs that shut their doors at 1:00 p.m. knowing that their clients are just going to loiter and do drugs. Stop allowing people who have been trespassed from Old Town to still receive services. I've been told the topic that I'm bringing up is very political. I don't, I don't see the politics of the safety of our children. I implore you, as the council, to take action. I don't want to see our city going the way of other cities I've lived in. You've taken on the mantle of leadership. It's your responsibility. Please do something. Please do something.
Thank you. Next, we have Karen Ustrey.
Good evening. My name is Karen Ustrey, and I live on 70th Way near Majestic View Park. I've been a resident of Arvada since 2016, when my husband and I moved out here from Washington, DC, to settle down and raise a family. We chose to move to Arvada because we regularly visited friends who had put their roots down here. And over the years, we personally experienced Arvada's incredibly welcoming, engaged, and progressive community and values. We felt confident that the people of this community, when faced with the inevitable challenges presented by a rapidly growing population, would work collaboratively to meet those challenges with compassion and creativity. And so we moved more than halfway across the country to do so ourselves. As our children, now five and seven, are starting to pay closer attention to the world around them and really learn what it means to be a part of a community, it's more important to me than ever to be able to show firsthand how Arvadans can work together, to support one another, and raise the quality of life for all its neighbors. Instead of explaining to my young boys that the individuals sleeping outside the library in Old Town Square on a sub-freezing day in January simply have no place else to go, I want to tell them the story of how our community leaders came together to establish a 24/7 shelter that provided them with consistent access to the basic resources required to improve their lives and find stability. While the increase in the number of unhoused in Arvada is no doubt a complex issue that will require a multifaceted approach to truly tackle, it's clear that our unhoused neighbors need reliable access to basic necessities before they're able to achieve a quality of life capable to address their more complex needs. The fact that the capital funds are available to establish a 24/7 Navigation Center, and yet Arvada nor Jeffco have been able to work together to establish this space, is not the story I want to tell my children. Every single one of us deserves to be treated with humanity. Let's come together to provide our unhoused neighbors access to the fundamental resources they need to realistically take the next steps in improving their lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Pat Malone.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name's Pat Malone. I live at 6273 Kilmer Loop in Arvada. I hope the council has been having some conversations about what the city can do to show support for our Arvada immigrant residents. I'm making an assumption that at least a majority of you care deeply about them and have concerns about the raids and detentions going on in Colorado and on the Front Range. I trust that you care enough to not wait until ICE shows up in Arvada, but to be a source of information that's valuable to those being targeted. Have you considered adding a section to the city website that states the rights they have as people who live in America? Just like you and me, they have protections, the Fourth Amendment against unlawful searches. They're protected by the Fifth Amendment to remain silent, and by the Sixth Amendment to seek legal advice and the right to a trial. People who are scared even to go to school, go outdoors, go to their jobs, they might not realize their rights. Are you talking about the ICE threat with the Arvada businesses? Every business should have a supply of these red Know Your Rights cards for their employees and the customers who come in. They could just pick them up. We can help get you a supply if you need those. They're both in English and Spanish, and they state the Fourth and Fifth Amendment rights. Immigrant organizations are conducting Know Your Rights trainings, both in person and by Zoom. You only have to ask them. All of us who keep showing up here are just asking you to do something proactive to let immigrants who live here know you have their back. These are just a few ideas. I know you, as a council, can do even better. I want to also state my, I'm segueing. I want to also state my support for the need to educate all Arvada residents. Let us know that having homeless people come into our neighborhood to get essential services is not a cause for alarm. If you don't educate us, you're going to keep running into neighborhood after neighborhood who are fearful of a Navigation Center. Show us the evidence from communities that have not been hurt by having such a building in their neighborhood. And while you're doing that, I urge you to find and thoroughly vet a location that is suitable and can be operational before next winter. Thank you. I'd like to leave these with Christian, if I could, for...
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. I'm Joyce Richardson, and I reside at 6521 West 69th Way in Arvada. I come here again tonight to speak for our vulnerable residents of Arvada, whether they are housed, unhoused, working, not working, citizens, or immigrants. I believe that a just and caring society is vital to our humanity, and as such, I believe that we must care about those who are in jeopardy. I'm asking our city leadership to work with haste to establish a Navigation Center and 24/7 shelter for our unhoused residents before it is either searingly hot or searingly cold. I also ask that the city leadership craft a statement for inclusion on the city website that states, in a wordsmithed fashion, that we, as a city, welcome a diverse community and will work to make our community safe from the harm created by ripping families apart due to immigration status. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bruce Morrison, 6521 West 69th Way. And I'd like to thank Mayor Simpson and the council for all that you do for Arvada. I know sometimes it seems thankless, but my first comment, I would like to raise my voice in support of those who have spoken of the need for the city to protect immigrants, and also those who have spoken in support of a Navigation Center and a 24-hour shelter, hopefully before next winter. I would like to point out that the wealthy elites that benefit from high property values and low wages that cause homelessness are the same people that benefit from military and economic policies that create the horrific conditions that immigrants are fleeing. They're the same people that make it difficult for the people in Arvada, including those in Arlington Meadows and other neighborhoods, to prosper. They also benefit from anti-immigrant scapegoating because it reduces the ability of immigrants to fight back against wage theft or other abuses on the job. This scapegoating deflects, also deflects attention away from the crimes the wealthy commit against all of us. We are all worse off. This includes white, black, Latino, LGBTQ, immigrants and descendants of immigrants, indigenous people, and others. We are here today defending immigrants and LGBTQ people against, because we don't like cruelty and injustice, because they are the ones currently being attacked. We need to defend them because they are part of our community and our families. We do not want them torn from our communities. But also, we defend them because these scapegoating efforts usually do not stop at the original targets. The rest of us will soon become targets, or could soon become targets. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Kelly Rowe.
Thank you, councilmembers. My name is Kelly Rowe, and I'm the owner of Gemini Imprints at 5840 Old Wattsworth Boulevard in Old Town, Arvada. And I'm here today to talk to you about the growing crisis of homelessness in our city and how it's directly impacting my business and some of my fellow business owners in the community. Since buying our building in 2021, the homeless issue in Arvada has been a constant and growing problem. In the four years owning our property, we've had instances of vandalism, public intoxication, drug use, and even aggressive behavior directed at my staff, tenants, and customers. In spite of this issue, our company has grown, providing more jobs and higher sales tax revenue to the city of Arvada. We have also seen a huge increase in our property tax rate over the last 14 months, and I feel that the homeless issue is getting worse, or at least not getting any better. My question tonight for you is, what are you doing for me and what are you doing for the small business owners in our Old Town, Arvada? As city councilmembers, you work for the community, you work for our community. And as a business owner and member of this community for the last four years, I don't seem to understand what the plan is to address the issue and why this issue seems to be getting worse or a little bit more confusing. There doesn't seem to be a cohesive plan that I've seen, and it seems that we're unable to fix this issue in a manner that will work for the Old Town community. I feel, I feel there has not been a good response to this issue from the city council. And again, I ask, what are you doing for us and the small businesses in our community? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Mike Griffith.
Mike Griffith, 6820 West 62nd Avenue. Good evening, councilmembers. I'm here as a member of the Old Town Business Improvement District Board of Directors, representing Valorum Financial, which is located at 7609 Grandview Avenue. Valorum Financial purchased their property in 2017 and worked closely with the city staff for a two-year period to implement extensive renovations while maintaining the building's historic charm. Over the past few years, Valorum Financial, like many of the Old Town businesses, has dealt with an increasing number of criminal trespass, vandalism, theft, and general destruction of property. This has become a significant financial and emotional burden for the family-owned and operated business. A couple specific examples include weekend break-ins, which is a fun way to start the week on Monday, human waste on the doorstep, which is also fun, discarded needles and other drug materials around the property, harassment from disturbed individuals coming into the business and loitering outside, and starting fires behind the building's newly landscaped area, which is the latest popular thing that they're dealing with. Councilmembers, you have heard a wide range of concerns about folks causing issues in Old Town. You have also heard solutions like moving Mission Arvada, establishing a Navigation Center, and encouraging the jailing of repeat offenders. The sum total of these grievances and proposals should be directed to our talented and qualified City of Arvada staff. Staff is well-equipped to explore and develop appropriate and economically feasible solutions to this behavior and end it for good. Simply put, our small businesses and small business community is struggling, and if these issues are not addressed, we will continue to lose business and tax revenue, making it harder to invest in humanitarian initiatives. We trust and believe in the City of Arvada team to dream big and deliver. As a citizen, I appreciate the passion that each of you poured into the early college property. I'm certain that we all wish the situation would have started and ended differently. None of you are credentialed experts in all things relating to city government, nor are you required to be, but you are our elected leaders. The defining characteristic of a strong leader is the ability to effectively delegate. We need you to be exceptional leaders now. We are all rooting for you to succeed, and as you continue to serve our city, please work with staff to identify priorities that reflect community concerns, and then allow staff time to assemble options to address those concerns. And finally, use your position as electeds to evaluate and determine a path forward. Respectfully, own your position as elected decision-makers and leave policy to the experts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Judy Douglas, 10122 West 70th Drive. I've recently, have recently seen several posts on Nextdoor from a person who wants the homeless gone, and I don't dispute that it's really a serious problem. I don't dispute that. This person just wants these people gone and isn't proposing any solutions, and has a website that kind of supports the fact that we just have a population that just needs to vanish. So I decided to post something myself on Nextdoor, which I don't do very often, and I suggested that putting these people in jail is a revolving door that's really expensive, and it isn't solving the problem, and that we really needed to get, as a community, behind the city council to find the solutions. It turned out, I'm kind of a person that likes to keep my inbox empty, but suddenly I had like over 80 replies to this. So it was like an informal survey, in a way. I had 42 likes and 43 dislikes. Kind of shows the division that we have in our community. The comments were a little more useful. Most of the comments were positive, people with compassion, people who were homeless or had been homeless and explained their situations. There were people who, of course, thought that I was just really pretty crazy about this, that just get these people to vanish and that'll solve it. There were people who thought that nobody wanted help, that they just wanted to stay homeless. So it was a whole gamut of opinions there. There were some that are really pretty bizarre. One person thought that the city council was money laundering funds from the state, the homeless funds from the state, and using those to your own advantage. Maybe one of you has a privately funded jet plane? I don't know. It was kind of way out there. Anyway, it showed me kind of what you're up against, and I'm really sorry about that. I think that the council had one time thought about having community discussions, and I really think that's a great idea. We need to try to talk about this amongst ourselves and really find some solutions. Maybe it's out of the box. Maybe we go work with the courts to get some people in permanent places where they can't get out, and maybe we have a lot of places where people could just get help and not become homeless. So I appreciate all that you do, and I hope that the community can really get behind you. Thanks.
Thank you. And I can assure you, I don't believe any of us have private jets. Next, we have Lila Bowman.
Lila Bowman, 7477 Newland Street, Arvada. Thank you, Mayor Simpson, and councilmembers, for your service. I'm grateful to be here, but I'm concerned that as we continue discussion about homelessness, where are the voices of our unhoused neighbors? It's difficult for the most vulnerable among us to get here to participate, but their stories are important. So I would like to recount what two unhoused neighbors have shared with me to challenge stereotypes and our tendency to speak of them as if they are objects instead of our Arvada neighbors. They are a, the stories that we have heard are only a small but visible segment of the whole unhoused community and the issues involved. First story, Devin, a former engineer from Arvada, living in Arvada, experienced a severe head injury and could not work. His disability application got delayed so long that he was evicted from his home. While living on the street, he was run over by a driver who then fled the scene, which Devin said happens frequently to the unhoused. In the aftermath, his ID and medications disappeared, along with his belongings, causing him even more instability. Devin's greatest frustration, though, is not being able to sleep. If he sleeps... Devin's greatest frustration, though, is not being able to sleep. If he sleeps at night, even in a shelter, he gets robbed, and if he sleeps during the day, cops treat him like a criminal. "They say homeless people are crazy," he told me. "You deprive any person of sleep for weeks at a time, and of course, they will act crazy. That's why sleep deprivation is used as a tool of torture, and not being able to sleep feels like torture to me. How can I work towards a stable life when I'm not allowed to sleep?" A navigation center that provides safety and stability to support people in transition would help neighbors like Devin start contributing again to our fine community. Our vada Ms. Gomez was a mom of four, including a newborn. Her daughter was in my daughter's class. Her husband worked construction. They were saving up to move out of Section 8 housing into their own home when someone stole the identity of a neighbor with a similar name to apply for benefits fraudulently. Their landlord admitted that he had cooperated with the fraud investigation because he didn't know which Gomez they meant, but despite his admission to Section 8 and despite the Gomez's expensive efforts to defend themselves, the Gomez's were evicted by Section 8 and left without recourse. They were forced to pull their kids from school midsemester and leave Arvada, the only home their kids had known, to find temporary shelter in Aurora in a dangerous neighborhood in a house that had been condemned. Being thrown into chaos has not only harmed the Gomez family long-term, but Arvada is poorer to lose them as neighbors. A well-sourced navigation center would have helped this family find support to avoid the complete disruption of their lives and to allow them to continue contributing to our Arvada community. Devin and Ms. Gomez, like many of our unhoused neighbors, are highly intelligent, kind, and talented people who add value to our city, and not just by living here. They could also offer rich insight to this council and to the community about how to create an effective navigation center that benefits all of Arvada, including the small businesses and the schools in Old Town. Navigation works. Please let's strive for a community of we, not us and them, and begin by going out of our way to include the voices of those most affected by this council's decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jill Armstrong.
Good evening, Mayor Simpson and council members. I'm Jill Armstrong at 16877 West 73rd Place. I appreciate all the efforts that Arvada has undertaken recently around affordable housing and the homeless, but there is still great need for a North Navigation Center. Although Mission Arvada has tried to step up into the gap, they rely on volunteers in a building that is not sufficient for what they are trying to do. We cannot go through another winter without the services that a navigation center would provide. It feels like the city is stalled right now without a specific plan in place. It is important for Arvada to honor the commitment to help with a North Navigation Center in Jeffco and a shelter, and to expedite this process. I have participated in the point-in-time count in Arvada and talked to families and individuals. Most of them have simply fallen on hard times and want immediate shelter and ultimately housing. We are talking about human beings that deserve more from us than words.
Thank you. Next, we have Amy Dempsey. Ann Dempsey?
Hi, my name is Amy Dempsey. I live in Orion Lane in West Woods, where I've been a resident for 20 years. I'm a member of Community of Grace at Presbyterian Church, and I'm a nurse at Lutheran Hospital. I can't believe there aren't more of us here speaking on behalf of a navigation center. We really need one to help meet the basic needs of the unhoused in Arvada. The financial burden is too great for us to ignore this issue. I see the impact of homelessness at the hospital on a daily basis. Preventative medicine based on meeting basic needs, vaccines, dental hygiene, and wound care is essential for helping people before they are in crisis. Emergency medicine is extremely expensive and a financial burden that honestly, we all assume. A navigation center would help us address these concerns, connect people to resources, and offer wraparound services before they enter the acute care setting for costly care. Not only is a navigation center the financially right thing to do, but I believe it is our moral obligation as a community. Every human being has dignity and should be treated with respect, and this should not be this responsibility of only the churches in our community, but of the entire city to use our finances to care for the vulnerable. A navigation center is needed, and the time is now to take action. Thank you so much, and thank you for all that you do for our community.
Thank you. Next, we have Ricky Johnson.
Hello, my name is Ricky Johnson. I'm staying on 7685 Maryland 17th Drive. Today, I'm here to speak about the Navigation Center. As a young man and a father, I had experienced homelessness, so I personally understand the challenges and the struggles that come with it. Having an access to a Navigation 24 Center would have made a significant difference in my life during the difficult period. Therefore, I strongly advocate for the establishment of such a center in Arvada to provide a comprehensive support and guidance to both the homeless and immigrant communities. Due to the failure of securing and establishing the early college of our Arvada building, it is imperative that we expedite our search for a new location. This will hopefully ensure that we are ready for the upcoming winter season at the end of the year. Benefits, I'm sure you guys all know, would be to provide a safe and welcoming space for individuals to seek assistance and support. It'll offer immediate access to essential services and resources such as food, shelter, and medical care. It'll connect individuals with long-term housing and employment opportunities. It'll empower individuals with tools and resources they need to navigate complex systems and overcome barriers. It'll reduce the risk of long-term homelessness and improve all overall well-being. Call to action, I urge the community of Arvada to come together and support the establishment of a Navigation 24/7 Center for the homeless and immigrants. Your contributions, whether through donations, volunteering, or advocacy, will make a tangible difference in the lives of those in need. Together, we can create a more inclusive and supportive community for all. As a community, we must collaborate to find the most suitable location for this establishment. Instead of talking about it, let us be about it. It might be you or someone you know who could benefit from the resource center. And as a side note, maybe we could put together a type of task force for all homelessness and civic issues. The Rising helped me when I was injured and I was out of work. I had some crutches, and I needed to get a size that fit because it was too short. So they helped me with that. They helped when I, during the COVID, I needed food. My wife and I, you know, we struggled a little bit, but they were right there. So we need to get together and just, let's do this. You know what I mean? Like Nike, let's do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Gina Halasy.
Hi, my name is Gina Halasy, and I live in Maple Valley, next to a park and a creek. So I'm here on behalf of the Ralston Valley Coalition, and RVC was born out of necessity as a citizen rights organization. And recently, we've been notified that you're going to end the online access, and we wanted to give you some options to consider. You know, as you know, for, because I like to talk, three minutes is not enough time. So I, I would encourage you to allow people, if they're going to take the time to drive down here now because they can't be online, for individuals to have up to maybe five minutes, and for HOAs and community organizations to have up to 10 minutes. Jeffco and other cities allow 10 minutes for organizations such as that, so I would encourage, encourage you to do that. Also, rather than assume you know what your constituents want, you should really consider the approach of allowing even more citizen input prior to making big decisions in the city, especially on these hot topics. There's enough passion in this room to tap into, just from sitting here and listening, to help solve these issues that you're facing in our city. So I think these things are important to people, and I think they would put in the time if you asked for citizen input. Many HOAs and organizations like RVC would gladly serve. We've gone to many meetings over the years on transportation and different things. I would think that you know by now that we have some thoughtful engagement when we do come before you. We kind of have a motto of facts-not-feelings approach when we're talking about land use and development in our neighborhoods. We're not the NIMBY folks. So I would like to request on the record publicly and officially that RVC would have a seat at the table as the city embarks on this comprehensive plan review that you're going to be doing in 2025. Since the inception of RVC, we have strived to bring thoughtful engagement to all our encounters with the city and the staff on behalf of our numerous HOAs in our membership, as well as the thousands of individual homeowners that are in our group. So we really encourage you to continue to listen to folks. I appreciate all the people here talking. There's been a lot of good comments, and you've got to love the First Amendment. That's all I got to say. I love it. Thank you.
Indeed, we do. Next, we have Memory Wolenwebber?
Good evening. I have a handout. May I approach?
Please.
Good evening, Mayor Simpson and honorable Arvada City Council members. My name is Memory Wolenwebber. I am representing the faith leaders of Arvada, which I've given you a list of churches. My church, Community of Grace, a Presbyterian church, and I'm on the Board of Directors for Coloradans for the Common Good, and I am a longtime citizen of Arvada and your constituent. I want to begin by thanking you for your tireless service, your leadership, your listening ears, and your hearts for Arvada. My story, a little bit of it, I'm a third-generation Coloradan. We moved Arvada in 1955. My street, Dudley Court, was the furthest west-developed street in Arvada. We're three generations strong of Arvada West graduates, and I student-taught in 1971 under Lois Lindstrom. I taught in Jeffco for 34 years. 20 of those years were at Seacrest in Arvada, Seacrest Elementary. In my last years of teaching, homelessness and having homeless first graders was a very common thing. One afternoon, a little boy went to the bathroom on a pass and didn't come back, and so I went down to find him, and he was sitting with his pants off in the urinal and flushing the toilet. And I said, "What are you doing?" And he said, "I'm washing my bottom." And he lived in a car with his mom, and that was probably the only way he could get a bath. In July of 2024, the faith leaders of Arvada met. They were hosted by Arvada United Methodist Church and the First Ward Church of the Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. We met to address the unhoused in Arvada and the promise of a navigation center. As you see on the front and back of your list, over 35 houses of worship and institutions were present. Our common values were the first thing we looked at, and that we decided was to love our neighbors as ourselves. Who is our neighbor? It is everyone. Is it the marginalized? We are especially called to love them as ourselves. The faith leaders of Arvada believe in the inherent worth and dignity of every human being. So I'm here to implore you, do not give up. Do not give up on a navigation center. Keep working, and keep working with neighboring counties, cities, and faith communities. Let's solve the problems of children washing in urinals for the good of our community and the betterment of our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the sign-up sheets I have for public comment this evening. Is there anyone else in chambers who would like to speak at this time? Seeing none, Ms. Rush, I will close the public comment portion of this evening's agenda. We do have someone on Zoom? Thank you. Mr. Schweitzer, whenever you're ready. Mr. Schweitzer, you are muted.
There you go.
There you go. You may begin. Yes, you may begin.
Hello, council. Hello, Mayor Simpson. My name is Mike Schweitzer. I live at 14615 West 62nd Place in Arvada. I want to make a brief comment. Since I was not able to be there tonight, I really appreciate this remote access. I've spoken to you about this several times. I've heard recently that, that remote access is going to be taken away, and that part of it is due to overhead and time it takes to set this up and for cost. I want to call attention to the fact that, that the public comment that you do get, including the, the passionate comments I've heard last week and this week, both in chambers and when you do get remote access, remote access comments, are very valuable, and I've said this many times, very valuable to inform council, to direct decisions. And there are times like my situation tonight where I'm not able to be there in person, but I do want to continue to encourage you to, to rethink remote access and to maintain that as a means of communicating with council and mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rush, do we have additional? Mr. Rollick, whenever you're ready.
Good evening, City Council, and good evening, Mayor Simpson. My name is Mike Rollick. Obviously, I do live in Jeffco. We all know that. 1735 West 59th Drive, Golden, Colorado 80403. But I'm here on behalf of Ralston Valley Coalition, along with Gina and Mike Schweitzer. So we are dismayed to see the online option go away, but as Gina had mentioned, it would be rather interesting to start looking at some of the additional options. There was a point when, when we were dealing with the Amazon situation, that the city council had devised a way for our attorney to have equal time and rebuttal and closing remarks. A while back, I did talk about the laws of learning, obviously, the law of primacy, the what you learn first is what you learn best, and the law of recency, the lasting here could have a lasting effect. Citizens get kind of put in the middle there. You'll have the case manager, and they should be proud of their work, and they should be proud of all the sufficiency reviews that they have done, but they work them hand-to-hand with the developer to get it to a point where it should pass. They'll talk, and then the developer will talk, or applicant will talk. We're kind of in the middle, and then all the rebuttal happens on one side only. So if there's any chance for, A, the 10-minute option like Jeffco does and other, other jurisdictions do, and then some form of rebuttal period or even just a closing remark, maybe, maybe a proportion of the total time. I spoke to DMS about two years ago. We had an eight-hour hearing. Not suggesting they have eight-hour hearings all the time, but they did a portion of equal time for some closing remarks. Additionally, yes, we want to be part of the Comprehensive Master Plan, and it's a very interesting situation right now because I've been really getting into demography. I went to the summit in, I think, November, reading all of the demographics, looking at the coroner reports, not in a morbid way, but just to understand where population is going, and we're seeing a slight decline in Jefferson County and in Arvada. We took a look, and Arvada is, is actually looking at a decrease in population over the, over the next few years and expected to keep doing that until 2027. So I would think that, you know, as we're looking at Comprehensive Master Plan, land use is huge, but also we need to look at the, what's happening with population and possibly the why as well. Yeah, it looks like population grew by about 3,500 over the last five years. This is according to a stat from 2022 for Arvada, but decreasing to another 2,030 over the next five years. So we're kind of stagnant. Maybe in the comp plan, there's ways to really foster economic development. We're really happy to see folks like Remington Homes do that mixed-use kind of light retail, big-box stores, and big industrial. Might go the way of automation. So it's really exciting to see small businesses prop up, and hopefully, we'll keep people coming to Arvada. And I really thank you for your time, and I hope we can be involved in the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rollick. Ms. Rush, do we have anyone else on Zoom? All right, one more. Ms. Hall, Dr. Hall? Ms. Hall, Dr. Hall.
Hello. Are we ready?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
Okay. My name's Harriet Hall, and I live on Grandview Avenue in East Arvada. I first want to apologize for not being there in person. I'm taking care of my husband, who just had back surgery. And I do want to echo Mr. Schweitzer's comment about virtual meetings and their importance in situations such as this. I think it's a loss for Arvada that we're losing that. But that's not the reason that I'm signed on. I want to talk about the homeless situation. On Saturday, I attended the volunteer reception at Mission Arvada. There were over 75 people there, and I learned that there are well over 200, about 250 volunteers just for the day shelter and other day activities at Mission Arvada, in addition to a huge number who are also volunteering for the overnight shelter that's going on. And one of the things that I think is often not understood about Mission Arvada, I heard it a little bit tonight, was that, well, why do they close at 1:00? Why shouldn't they be serving people all day? And they close at 1:00 because that's all they have, the resources to do. It amazes me, as someone who volunteers on the grants team at Mission Arvada, how much they are able to do with how little. And part of that is because they have such a huge community outpouring of support from volunteers. But in my work with them, as well as just being a part of Arvada, the importance of an overnight shelter is crucial, and the lengths that Mission Arvada has had to go to to meet that need when the, what resource we did have, which was meager anyhow, was withdrawn, is just amazing. They do do amazing things with very little. And I know it's not enough, and that's why we need the navigation center. That's why we need 24-hour, year-round, overnight sheltering. We really need to care about our homeless residents and treat them with humanity. And I do want to just postmark on what I'm saying that treating people with humanity also applies to our immigrants, the immigrant members of our community. They also deserve to be treated with humanity, and I agree with the testimony that you got tonight about that. I heard so many comments tonight that I just want to say ditto, so I can't tell what my time is, but I'm done.
Thank you, Dr. Hall, and speedy recovery to your husband as well.
Thank you.
Ms. Rush, do we have any additional on Zoom? Seeing none, you haven't spoken yet, have you? Please come forward. And a quick note, if anybody wants to speak a second time or if they don't feel comfortable going now, we do have a second public comment at the end of the meeting that is five minutes, and everybody may speak if a second turn at that. So with that, your name, address, or neighborhood, if you feel more comfortable with that.
Council members, my name is Virginia Ortiz. I live at 5155 Dudley Street. And I want to start first by thanking my neighbors who spoke in support of immigrants. I'm not an immigrant. I am indigenous. But people who look like me, whose skin is brown, are being harassed. And I want to know that you have my back as well and the backs of indigenous people just like me who are being harassed by ICE agents because they believe that we're immigrants and that we don't belong. I also am here on behalf of the Jeffco Advocacy Network. I'm here on behalf of the two nonprofits that I run, both GoFarm, which provides and makes available affordable access to nutrient-rich food that is grown locally and sourced by the organization GoFarm from 80 local farmers. We have a mobile farmer's market that serves lower-income families here in Arvada, and we have a community fridge that serves unhoused residents in Golden. I also serve as the Executive Director of the Native American Housing Circle, and we provide rent assistance right now and are developing 196 units of low-income housing and supportive housing for unhoused Native Americans and for low-income Native Americans at 901 Navajo in Denver. We have one housing navigator, and I have to share with you that housing navigation works. Just in the last six months, we have served two unhoused natives from Arvada, and our housing navigator was able to connect them with essential services, workforce development services. One of those two persons needed a connection to affordable housing. We were able to do that through Brothers Redevelopment. That person is now housed. The other one needed rent assistance for the sober living facility that they wanted to get into. And again, it speaks to the desire for folks to address their unhoused living situation and to address the addictions that they're dealing with. And in my experience in working with unhoused populations, little empathy goes a long way. Some understanding of folks and their desire to live like everyone else in safe and stable housing and to address their addiction issues. And so I'm asking you to listen to what folks are saying and to build that navigation center.
Ma'am, your time has expired.
And I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in chambers who would like to go at this time? Sorry, you'll have to wait for the five-minute, since you went before previously. So is anybody else who hasn't gone at the three-minute limit would like to go at this time? But we do have a second public comment at the end of the meeting, which you will be able to speak again at. So seeing none, I will close the public comment portion of this, the first public comment portion of this evening's agenda, and I will open us into new business. We have one item on this evening's consent agenda. That is R25-019, a resolution accepting an annexation petition concerning a section of 64th Avenue Right-Away, approximately located at 15812 West 64th Avenue in the city of Arvada, County of Jefferson, State of Colorado, finding said petition substantially compliant with CRS 31-12-1071 and setting a public hearing for March 18, 2025, at 6:15 p.m. for City Council to determine whether the area meets the requirements of CRS 31-12-104 and 105 and is considered eligible for annexation. Councilmember Pfeiffer?
I move to approval for consent agenda item R25-019.
Thank you. Councilmember Ambrose? Okay. That passes seven to zero. Thank you very much. Next, we have a couple of items on, or one item on first reading. Mayor Pro Tim Mormon?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that CB 25-005, an ordinance amending several sections of Chapter 90, solid waste of the Arvada City Code be approved on first reading, order published in full, and a public hearing date set for March 4, 2025, at 6:15 p.m.
That, all motions are cast. That passes seven to zero. Thank you very much. Next, we have a motion to the Arvada Urban Renewal Authority, and I will make that motion. So I move to appoint Deborah Bustos to the Arvada Urban Renewal Authority for an unexpired term ending April 30, 2027. We do need quickly a motion to ratify my motion, though. Councilmember Ambrose?
Move to ratify the appointment?
That'll work. All right. Council will vote. That passes seven to zero. Congratulations, Ms. Bustos. All right, next, we have two public hearings on this evening's agenda. The first is CB 25-002, an ordinance amending Section 2-77 of Chapter 2 of the Arvada City Code pertaining to compensation for certain boards and commissions members, ordinance number 4888. Ms. Garner, I believe you have this item.
Thank you, Mayor, members of City Council. This ordinance proposes an amendment to Section 20, sorry, 2.77 of Chapter 2 of the City Code to establish a consistent flat rate of $100 per meeting for planning commission members. This amendment simplifies compensation by standardizing the payment for the planning commission when they're acting as the Board of Adjustment. This update ensures members are appropriately compensated while maintaining clarity in the code. This amendment also removes mention of the local licensing authority, which was changed in 2024. The Arvada team recommends that the City Council approve CB 25-002, an ordinance amending Section 2-77 of Chapter 2 of the Arvada City Code pertaining to compensation for certain boards and commission members. And I'm available if you have any questions.
Open it for council questions. Councilmember Ambrose, your light was first.
I'll make the motion if there's no questions.
I have a question, councilmember. I have a quick question. Ms. Garner, how long? I'm aware that planning commission has been set at $100 a meeting for some time now. How long has that been? Do we know?
It's been at least since 2022, when we essentially kind of consolidated the duties of the Board of Adjustment with the planning commissioners. So at least since then, but it probably precedes that.
And do we know if it's inflation-adjusted?
No, I don't think we've changed that rate. It's always been a flat rate of $100. It's also commensurate with the other compensation that is offered in other metropolitan areas for planning commissioners.
Okay, great. My only note with that, then, is I'd like us to maybe keep an eye on it into the future. I don't want it to become devalued for the important work that that commission does. All right, councilmember Ambrose, you have the motion.
I move that CB 25-002, an ordinance amending Section 2-77 of Chapter 2 of the Arvada City Code pertaining to compensation for certain boards and commission members be approved on final reading numbered 48888, I think, and ordered published by title only.
All right, all votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. Thank you very much. And next, we have, were there any public comment on the preceding item? Seeing none. Next, I will open hearing for CB 25-004, an ordinance repealing and reenacting various sections of Chapter 70, Personnel Rules of the Arvada City Code, ordinance number 4890. And Ms. Gabriella Ballmer, you have this item.
Thank you, Mayor Simpson. Good evening, City Council. It's good to see you tonight. I am Gabriella Ballmer, Director of Human Resources, and I have a brief presentation for you on our recommended updates to the city's personnel rules. Can you hear me okay? Chapter 70 of Arvada City Code houses our personnel rules, and these are essentially the terms and conditions of employment between the city of Arvada as an employer and the city's employees. The updates we're making today, or the recommendations, were made in collaboration with our legal team and our leadership team to ensure that we comply with updated federal and state employment laws and also reflect changing city practices that are often driven by market practices and then some general housekeeping. Those can include things like updates to language, reorganization of rules to flow better and house things in right places. And sometimes we remove procedural language found in the rules that are actually found in city policies and procedures, and so we reference those in the rules. The recommended updates we're making today align to the City Council's strategic plan through our Organizational Service and Effectiveness Work System services, which include providing leadership policy and guidance to our organization and fostering an employer-of-choice work environment that attracts and retains a highly engaged and inclusive workforce. There are seven articles in Chapter 70 of the personnel rules. We are making recommended changes to four of them. So I'll go through these pretty quickly with you. You do have in your packets a complete version of the redlined rules, so you can see all of the changes. I'm going to go through the more substantive ones and explain those with you. So Article 2 is about employment, and there's a section in there for definitions and employment status. This is where we define certain terms that appear through the rules in more than one place, and we want a consistent definition of those terms. So that is where we put them. And in this section, we have updated or added some definitions. We've updated anniversary date of employment, so it's clear what that means and how that applies to new hires and then also rehires. Career progression model, promotion, and reclassification are all related to promotion and advancement here at the city or changes in jobs, and those have been updated to comply and mirror the definitions in the Colorado Equal Pay for Equal Work Act. And then we have emergency service status position and emergency situation. And this is added to be able to define what we mean by that when an emergency, what defines an emergency situation and how employees are assigned to emergency status. Section 7036, probationary period. All employees who are employed as regular employees at the city serve a probationary period when they're hired. This is a time to reflect on the appropriate skills, qualifications, and fit that an employee has with the city's culture, and it's typically up to a year long. So we have added some updates to this section specifically to career progression models. As I mentioned earlier, we added a definition for career progression that mirrors what the Equal Pay for Equal Work Act defines. And these are employees who promote or move from one level of a series of job into another. So for example, if you come in as an entry-level utility system technician and you achieve certain qualifications, you can advance to Level 2 or a journey level. And these do not require to serve a probationary period, so we have made that update to our probationary period section. Article 3 of the personnel rules deals with compensation. And in this section, we've primarily made some housekeeping adjustments. Reclassification section speaks to jobs that change over time. So as employees evolve in their work and their job changes substantially, their job can be reclassified. Essentially, we just moved the definition of this term to the definition section, and then procedural language was removed and referenced in the city's policy. We do have a policy and procedure around reclassifications that follows the state law. Appointment rates, there are two sections in the city's personnel rules that address appointment rates for new hires, basically what we offer them when they come to work, their starting rate, and also for transfers, promotions, and other job assignments. These used to be treated differently, and now they're all treated the same under the equal pay for equal work act. So we essentially just combine them. There is now one Section 7053 that addresses appointment rates for all of these, and we removed Section 7059. And then the last one here is callback, on-call pay, and assignment pay. These all have to do with how we pay employees when they leave work for the day and they're still on call to be called in for emergency reasons. And we've created a policy that, an updated policy existing that properly addresses these and procedures. So in the rules, we have removed some of that procedural language and just indicated that we do offer this, and it's paid in accordance with state and federal law. Article 4 is titled Attendance and Leave. The updates we've made here are really about taking care of our employees and making sure we're following modern and competitive market practices. The first section is on holiday leave. We clarified here that there are 10 city-designated holidays, where the city observes the holiday and we close the city hall. And there's also three floating holidays. This allows employees to choose when they want to take a holiday that might be more meaningful to them or meaningful to them but is not a city-designated holiday or designated by law. We've also introduced a section here where emergency, if there is an emergency on a holiday, where employees who would otherwise have that day off, Thanksgiving, for example, and are required to work on a holiday to respond to and are required to work on a holiday to respond to an emergency or an emerging weather event such as a winter storm and snow plowing, that they would be able to receive that holiday pay and also receive additional pay for the actual time worked during the holiday. We've also have a similar section that addresses how holiday is paid for our variable hour and seasonal staff. That section was previously located in our overtime section of the rules, and so we moved it under holiday leave because we feel it's better, it fits better in that section. The section on sick leave bank, the city has a sick leave bank. Employees can donate their paid time off or their sick leave hours into the bank. They often do that when they leave the city and they have hours unused. They will donate ten percent of their hours to the bank. The bank can be used by employees who are experiencing life-threatening illness or injury and have exhausted all of their other paid leave. This allows them to stay in a paid status while they're recovering or fighting basically to get through the life-threatening injury or illness. And what we've done in this section is we've added domestic violence, a life-threatening domestic violence situation as a reason that employees can apply for the sick leave bank. And then finally, bereavement leave. We have a section in the rules that allows for employees to take time off for bereavement, to attend the funeral of a loved one, to grieve, to deal with those matters. In this section, we've added coverage for fertility loss. We've also expanded the definition of family member to match the definition we use under our sick leave policy, which also aligns with the state's healthy families and sick leave law. And there was a section in that rule that called for availability of up to four hours of leave for attendance of city employee funerals. We learned recently with the passing of some of our police officer members that it takes a little bit more than four hours to attend those really elaborate funeral services, and we'd like to remove that limit in order to allow employees to take the actual time needed to attend those services. I'm sorry, I'm getting a little emotional. And just, you know, the reasonable time for travel in between. Those can be very long, long days, and we just want to make sure employees can attend those and not worry about their pay. I've practiced that so many times, and I get emotional every time.
We get it. Take a breath. If you want some water, we can grab you some.
Thank you. I'm okay. I'm almost done. All right, Article five. Article five is about employee responsibilities, and this goes into employee conduct, how we expect employees to show up at work and things we'd like them not to do. We, this section includes a list of, a very long list of behaviors that can get employees into disciplinary issues. And what we've done with this section, it probably in your red lines looks like the messiest section because we've restructured and reorganized the whole section. We started with an opening statement about what our expectations are for behavior. And so these are what I call our price of admission values. You have to bring these with you to get in to the city. And those expectations include things like professionalism, ethics and integrity, accountability, respect, inclusion and diversity, and compliance. So we have some definitions under each of those headers, and these are the things we're looking and expecting employees to bring to the table when they work here. And then the section on discipline is organized into sections as well now, so it's easy to find the areas that we're trying to look for. And that includes sections on misconduct involving honesty and integrity, property, persons, safety, customer, and public service, and then general misconduct. The actual disciplinary context has not changed. We've just reorganized it. Lastly, we have two, we have a section on complaint resolution and grievance for our employees. So if they feel like they disagree with the way they're being treated in their performance evaluation, or they feel like we're not following our rules, they can file a complaint through the internal complaint procedure and the grievance procedure. And we've just updated these to clarify the steps involved, how to use each one, what they're used for, the steps involved in the process. And we've added some clarification. For example, when it's the city manager has the final say in a lot of these resolutions, but when they're also the director of the employee, we have to work a different system. So we've clarified how that works. And then for grievance, we've clarified that the city manager may appoint a grievance committee when needed to help address the grievance. And if he or she decides to do that, they must appoint it within seven days of notifying the employee. And those are the recommended updates. We do not expect any of these to have a vegetarian impact. In confering with Brian, our Director of Finance, we feel that any costs associated with these changes, primarily around the holiday leave portion, we feel that those can be managed with existing budgets. So we don't have a financial impact for you, but we will be monitoring those changes closely and come back to you with any changes if necessary. And then I'll take questions.
Thank you very much. Quickly, I will open it to public comment. If there's anyone in chambers who would like to give public comment on this item. Seeing none, I will open it to council questions, comments. Councilmember Pfeiffer.
If there's not any questions, I'll go ahead and...
I have a couple myself.
Go for it.
All right. First, I want to commend the addition of fertility loss to the bereavement leave. Having been in that position myself many years ago, I can tell you, it's devastating. My question is, how many days would be applicable to that?
It's forty hours, or so typically five days, but it's forty hours.
Okay, that sounds highly appropriate. Thank you for doing that. That's a great addition. And then in addition, for the addition of the domestic violence, I noted that it has to be life-threatening to go into that bank. I'm curious because domestic violence in particular, perhaps more so than a car accident for most people, obviously every situation's unique, but for most could be far more traumatic an event, even if it's not life-threatening, than a car accident or tripping and falling on the sidewalk and breaking your arm, et cetera. So do we offer additional supports for those who may be suffering such a thing to ensure that they're taken care of?
We do. Would you like me to share what those are?
Please.
We have a domestic abuse policy, which allows up to three days of paid leave to deal with immediate needs. And directors can make a call if they need more time for specific instances. And we also allow our sick leave to be used for those reasons, as well as sometimes if those issues result in need for continuous counseling or a serious injury or illness, we have FMLA and extended care leave that will also support the employees.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Great job, Ms. Ballmer, to you and your team. Councilmember Pfeiffer, you have the motion.
I move that Council Bill twenty-five dash zero zero four, an ordinance repealing and reenacting various sections of chapter seventy, personnel rules of the Arvada City Code be approved on final reading number four eight nine zero and ordered published by title only.
Mayor Protim Mormon.
I just wanted to thank you and your staff for all the work on this. I know, I can see that a lot of work went into it, so really appreciate that. Thank you.
All votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. All right, that closes our public hearings this evening, and next we have a workshop. Ms. Haley, approximately how long do we believe the workshop intends to be? Ms. Garner?
There is an effort to have a succinct discussion. I believe we have seven slides plus one for questions.
Okay, so I open it to council. Would you like to take a quick five-minute break? Or do you want to try and, all right, I see the motions. Let's plow through this thing. Welcome, Ms. Garner.
Thank you very much, Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, we're gonna, this is a, I know this has been a discussion that has been anticipated for a while. We're excited to bring this to you and also eager to hear any questions or comments or ideas that you might have. And just wanted to note that we did receive a number of comments from councilmember Davis. Thank you for sending those. We're going to try to answer some of those, not only through the presentation, but try to come back to them and address them directly. Because if councilmember Davis has a question, I bet other people do too, so we're happy to answer those. But without further ado, let's try to get this going. So I wanted to just set the agenda with my seven slides. We're going to do a general overview of current regulations for short-term rentals. We're going to call those STRs, so just for clarity. We also have a bit of code enforcement data and discussion of some of those trends. I've also asked if we could have some of our code enforcement staff here. Really grateful to have them here so they can provide some very excellent, direct, primary data for what they're seeing. I wanted to talk with you a little bit about third-party assistance, so looking at a third-party contractor to help us with some of the challenges that we've had around short-term rentals. And then we wanted to have a brief discussion of recommendations for potential code changes and any feedback that the council, excuse me, feedback or ideas that the council may have. Are there any questions about the agenda?
I see no lights.
Thank you. So I wanted to just briefly provide just a general overview of what we're dealing with with short-term rentals in Arvada. We have approximately, and it varies, between two-hundred-and-fifty and three-hundred licensed short-term rentals that are operating in the city. If you actually look at how many are out there operating without a license, we have over eight-hundred, closer to nine-hundred. So there are many, many properties out there that are operating. They don't have a license. And I think code enforcement is going to speak to this a little bit, but one of the bigger challenges we have is when we're dealing with persistent chronic problems from some of these properties, it's also because they don't have a license. So it makes it even more difficult for us to enforce. Just general overview, licenses are valid for a year. They have to go through an annual renewal period. They have to reapply. There is one short-term rental per property, one rental at a time, so they can't have multiple rentals within the same property. And then three short-term rentals per licensee are allowed. They're permitted in primary and accessory structures, which we're going to talk a little bit about later. There's one onsite parking space that's required if it's in a primary structure. There is no commercial or large social events. They can't have parties, no weddings. Nothing like that can happen on the property. They're required to have weekly trash service, and they're only allowed to operate two-hundred-and-forty days out of a three-hundred-and-sixty-five-day period. I'm sure you have other questions about it. We can dive into some of those a little bit later. I'm going to ask if Nicole and Peter can come up. So Nicole Miller is the manager of code enforcement. Peter Krentz is one of our code enforcement officers and does a lot of the enforcement on these properties. So I'll let them speak to this data.
Evening, council. I'm Officer Krentz with code enforcement. I've primarily been the one who's been dealing with a lot of the short-term rentals for about the last year or so, so I just wanted to, I appreciate you letting me chat with you guys about this. The data we have, just so you notice, it's not a hundred percent accurate. A lot of it is just because of the limitations of the software or just based on the way that the residents are submitting the complaint because we're searching on keywords like short-term rental or STR or Airbnb. And if they put a space in there, weird, or they misspell something, it may not pull it correctly. So, but it is generally pretty close. As you'll see, the vast majority of our complaints are going to be coming on things like trash complaints with the trash bins being left out on the street or in the wrong place just for the majority of the time versus the one date that they're supposed to be collected, as well as snow and ice complaints. As you'll see from the numbers, most of the things that people complain about with STRs is going to be trash cans. The majority of those are that way. But even still, a lot of the complaints still are just coming in because they just don't want the STR in their neighborhood. And even what the ones I do complain on, most of them are very happy to comply. Generally, they are licensed and they're good to go. When I start to have issues is when they do not have a license because I don't have anybody to track down, or I have no way to do so. A lot of them are going to be owned by LLCs, some of them foreign LLCs, or they'll loop them through other states, and some of them will be defunct, and I just have nobody to talk to. So I'll post notices on the door, and they'll just take them down, and we're, you know, back to square one again. So that happens a lot. I have a handful of properties that generally take up the most of my time. As you see there, I've listed five. In those five, I've probably spent well over a hundred hours trying to deal with very simple issues at these properties, but just can't get anybody to hold accountable. Overwhelming, though, most folks are very happy to work with us and are very quick to respond. Do you have any quick questions for me as far as how code enforcement handles those, anything like that?
Councilmember Ambrose.
Yeah, I have a few questions. So how many complaints have you had about short-term rentals?
So those are the numbers I have up there. So you'll see, it's about twenty of the thirty-one trash complaints were specific to short-term rentals, and that's again using those specific keywords.
So in 2024, you only had twenty-three complaints about short-term rentals?
Pretty close to yes.
Well, that's what I'm asking, what's the total amount? Like for trash, for snow and ice, for parties, for everything else? I'm talking about all complaints for everything.
Right, so those are the ones that result in an actual warning. I will get complaints saying, oh, this person doesn't have a license, but if I check it and it's good, or if I get there and there's no issue, then it's going to close.
I'm just trying to figure out, how many times has a citizen called us about a short-term rental complaining? Or you've had to issue a warning? Like, do we get hundreds of calls about it? Do we get? Yeah, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
It's a small percentage of the complaints I get.
Okay.
Like sub-five percent. It's very small, yeah.
So five percent of all the complaints you get?
Correct. I think, I did the math. I think it's three percent of my cases currently are short-term rentals.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then can you comment about the three strikes and they're out policy? Or will you comment about that? Okay.
So in our code, there is no three-strikes-you're-out rule. That, and Rob Smetan is here. He can speak a little bit to this. I know that things happened before I was, before I took on this role, but it, I don't think there was ever an explicit three-strikes-you're-out rule that was in our code. There is a mechanism that is actually in the ordinance that talks about how we move it through, if it needs to go from a warning to the courts. And I think it talks about, there are essentially three steps. But those all result in a number of fines that need to be levied, or it never says if you do this three times, you're out. Now, what I will say is that in the code, there is a lot of discretion that is left to the director, that they can repeal a license, they could rescind it. We could do a number of different things if we felt like it was warranted. So, but that rule has never been there. I think it was just...
Ms. Garner, if I may, I went back and I watched the video for the original hearing. We do discuss that if somebody was found to be guilty, not three calls against them, but guilty of three complaints, three violations, that their license could and would be revoked.
Emily Grog for the city attorney's office. Our ordinance doesn't require that you have to hit that many. If you hit, if there's an egregious misuse of the property, we can revoke a license with one. There was at one point a civil penalty that had three levels of civil fines that would go up in cost. We removed that because that's not something that we really do here in the city. We use our municipal court. We already have that in place. That has a much higher possible maximum fine. That's what our code enforcement, that's how they enforce tickets. So the civil penalties didn't really make sense because we didn't have a mechanism on an easy way to enforce that. We would rather rely on our code enforcement. So that, I think, is where the three strikes, but we've never been bound to there being a necessary of three violations. We look at any substantiated violation and determine whether or not it should be revoked, suspended, or if the person comes into a compliance. So that's where the director of CED will work with code enforcement to look at that. We just haven't had very many substantiate complaints against license holders. As code enforcement was describing, the issues are with our unlicensed short-term rentals that the actual short-term rental licensees are usually very quick to comply because they want to maintain their license.
So what's the process for people who don't have licenses? Like, do we issue a fine if they're operating a facility without a license?
Generally, they're going to get a warning first because some of them just don't seem to know. I know that's not an excuse, but we always give them the benefit of the doubt. So they'll have a couple of weeks. Usually I give two weeks on those kinds of warnings to come into compliance, and ninety-nine percent of the time they do. They say, oh, shoot, I didn't know. You know, they'll call down, and they'll get it done the next day. So it's very quick.
Okay. And then how do you, how do you decide if, for example, there is a party, it's very loud, it gets called in, but it has to be verified, right? Like, so, like, parties typically happen at late at night when code enforcement isn't available, so you can't verify that a loud party is happening. So that complaint doesn't get verified and doesn't really enter into an ordinance system then?
It would go to the police department at that point if it's being called into, especially to dispatch, an officer would respond.
And then if the officer founds there was a party, then it is, like, verified that that happened? There's a police record, and then a process starts? that happened, there's a police record, and then, a process starts? So can you walk me through, like, what would, what a typical, like, amount of time it takes through to, like, bring a property to court? If it has, like, these five properties that have chronic complaints, how long it takes from people to start complaining about it for them to actually end up in a court for actionable things to happen?
It'd depend on the issues. If it's just something for, like, a license, I would try to always speak to somebody and see, why are we not licensed? I mean, our whole goal is compliance, it kind of depends on how we get there, is up to that person. If it's a lot of issues, like I said, I'm always going to give them a warning the first time, give them the benefit of the doubt, let them bring the property to compliance themselves. Usually, that's going to be at least two weeks out, we're going to have to go back and recheck it again, so we're probably going to be at four weeks. At that point, if I can get to someone, I would issue a summons. Court's usually going to be six weeks out for a code enforcement case, so it is, you know, we're looking at two months of a timeline now at this point, at least, before they're before the judge the first time, and then, you know, what the judge does is going to be up to them and what they discuss then.
So if, if, if residents are complaining about a problem property, the longest that it should take before they're summoned is two and a half months?
Well, they'll get the summons much sooner, but their court date will be six weeks out, yeah.
Right.
So they'll get the summons within two to four weeks.
So that's, so that's 10 weeks of them continuing to have complaints, and there's nothing that can happen until they get the summons. And then the summons, the worst thing that happens is that they have their license revoked, or there's also fines.
It would be up to the judge at that point. We can always issue fines, we have a fee schedule that we'll use at that point, but it kind of depends on what the judge, whatever deal they work out to bring them into compliance in the courtroom, what actually happens.
Have you ever had where people do not want a license, and so they just continue to operate it?
Generally, no. Most folks either didn't know that they were supposed to have one because they were, you know, licensed through Airbnb and they're paying their taxes that way. I've never had anybody outright say that they don't want to do it, because it's not that prohibitive, the price isn't that high, in my opinion, I think it's fair, so most folks will generally go get it right away.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Pfeifer.
So, how does it work when there's this noise complaint she's referring to? Because our ordinance says that the owner needs to be available 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and within one hour of the property. Do the police know who to call to get that person out there at 2:00 in the morning?
I believe that information is actually within the permitting system, so they could have access to that if they wanted to. I, they're generally going to handle it as a noise complaint, I would have the officers speak to that, because I'm not the one responding to that.
Because if, if they're not linking it, then that means they're not following the ordinances we passed up here. So let's make sure that that's tight, because I expect the police to either log it in yours as a complaint, or they need to call and get that person down there, because that is one of the biggest reasons, otherwise, we need to stop this whole program. Seriously, because that was a huge discussion with the public and when we debated it. So, I'm not feeling comfortable that that's there, but maybe Jessica can explain it.
Councilmember Pfeifer, actually, when we get to the next slide and I talk a little bit about a third-party contractor, that may help to address some of that.
So that's solving it after the fact, but-
No, it would be happening in real time.
No, 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 this has been approved for how many years? This ordinance to allow short-term rentals, how long has that been approved? Couple of years, right?
Yes.
In the ordinance, it says, the owner is to be there within one hour after receiving phone calls, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. I feel the police do not know who to call, or don't link, and it doesn't get into the database so we can track these individuals correctly, and make sure that we're addressing this, because maybe you're only getting 3% of complaints, but when one moved into my neighborhood, I got a whole bunch real quick. It's probably 100% of the phone calls I've gotten the last two weeks. So, I think some other council members are getting the same phone calls. And so, for us, maybe we're just taking the calls, but I need to make sure that we are tight in this ordinance, that we're following the rules. And I appreciate that people are getting into compliance, but I'm worried about the 8, 900 that are not, and I'm sure you'll get into that resolution, because, I'll tell you right now, I think we should just stop this entire program and not allow them at all in our city. But, I'll wait till we get through the whole, whole thing. It's just not worth the pound of flesh that he has to deal with, or the rest of the team has to deal with with what little we get. So, I just want to make sure that we have that in place. So maybe you can come back and shoot us a note of what the process is of a noise complaint, and hopefully in your new process can help close that, maybe, but let's just make sure the police and code are connected in tracking the noise complaints.
Councilmember Davis.
Thank you for this. Sorry we're not letting you get in to this very far. And, maybe Ms. Garner can, can address this. So I was counting the number of questions I asked. I sent Ms. Garner, there were 10 of them. And so, so I just wanted to know, instead of asking these 10 questions, should I just wait till the end, and you're going to be answering these during the presentation? What do you want me to answer?
Councilmember Davis, I'm going to do my best to answer them through the presentation.
Okay, that's, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garner, please continue. Thank you, Peter. The other thing, I just want, just want to acknowledge with the challenge of short-term rentals, I know that they're, they can be difficult, and I know that we often get some kind of problem properties that rise that are very noisy, and cause a lot of challenges for the council members. That is the minority of the short-term rentals that are out there. The other that I, that I will offer is that, once we don't have a mechanism to enforce or regulate, so if we said we're going to get rid of them, it won't get rid of them, we just won't have a mechanism to regulate them. And we won't have any fees coming in that can help offset some of the costs that we have to incur to manage that situation. So, what we feel is the best way to move forward is, let's regulate them and let's do the best job we can to try and catch those challenges that we face, and do the best job we can to bring them into compliance, knowing that we can never be 100%, but we're going to aim for that. So, in a previous municipality that I worked in, we had very similar problems, almost the same amount of short-term rentals, you know, some that were problem, many that just weren't licensed. So, we did wind up going with a third-party vendor. We worked with them for two to three years before I left the organization, and we had very good, very good response from them, and I think they were doing a really good job of addressing some of the challenges that Arvada also faces. So, I'm speaking about this third-party assistance from firsthand experience, and just to let you know that it's, it's a really nice tool in the toolbox as we try to address these challenges. What we are proposing is essentially a one-year pilot project that we can work with a third-party contractor. There aren't very many that are out there operating in this, in this world, but what they can do is pretty interesting, and it's pretty important. They really are able to, and, actually, I was going to go back and show you this slide that's actually on the front page, or on our agenda, is basically an identifier, that map talks, shows all the different short-term rentals that are happening in Arvada, licensed or unlicensed, so you can kind of get a sense of where they are and the density of those. And again, many of them are just not licensed, whether it's ignorance or deliberate inaction, that's a problem for us. We see not only, you know, a number of folks that are out there that are doing this without any kind of proper regulations, they're not following our rules, they don't even know what our rules are, but we're also not collecting fees on those. And, just to answer one question that Councilmember Davis asked, our fee is $150 for a short-term rental, that's an annual fee. We could certainly raise that. However, we do need to have somewhat of a nexus. If we're going to raise it by a significant amount, let's say, we're going to charge $1,000 for a fee instead of $150, we really do need to have some kind of nexus to support the rationale for that. We also stay somewhat in line with other municipalities, and the going rate around is about 150 to, probably ranging to about $300 for a permit fee. So going back to this, what, what this vendor can help, or a vendor like this can help us with, they do set up a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week hotline, there is a person that will respond to those phone calls, they have, essentially, it's an online platform, it's based in the cloud. When things happen with a certain property, if they are getting phone calls, they're putting information into their property files that we are able to see in real time, they are also contacting the appropriate authorities. If there is a party, if it's late at night, this will go to them. They can then speak with police, they can also provide the contact information, there's that continuity of services, that right now, it is difficult, we do need to get on that, and I, and I will address that later, to make sure that we do have that, if we don't go with a third-party. But if we do, that will be something that's much more seamless, everybody will be able to kind of see the information at the same time. They also help us to, to contact the short-term rental owner, they can actually be that go-between to get in touch with them and say, "Hey, we're hearing about this right now, go take care of it." I know that doesn't always address some of the challenges we have if we can't get good contact information from the property owner, but that can help us later if we want to review that short-term rental to see if we want to continue to allow it. They also help us just maintain records for future use, so it enables us to go back much more easily to that property address and say, "A, B, C, and D have happened here." Or, "You have nothing, we have no records of problems," and it just helps us to be able to maintain that continuity. What they can also do is find all of these properties that don't have licenses, and they can work with them to come into compliance. So it doesn't have to be code enforcement's job to go tell somebody to go get a license, we can work on that with our, with our vendor. They have access to basically all of the different rental platforms, which is really, it's too much for any staff person to really stay on top of. There are many, many different platforms, they change all the time, that's what this company is good at. They hunt them down and they keep track of what's going on with them. What that also does is it enables them to keep track of any rental monitoring that's happening on the site. So, I know that there have been complaints that have come out in the past where somebody said they had more than 240 days that they were operating. Well, we'll be able to actually verify that through this rental monitoring activity. They'll be able to look at that property and say, "Well, we can see how many times it's been rented," so, because it's on your platform. So, they can help us with that, and they can provide address identification for those unlicensed properties. So, they can go after them, we can go after them, that brings in a significant amount of funding that helps us to do our job better. Thank you. Councilmember Ambrose? Yes.
Yeah, I'm interested in why, when we would have a third-party, like, if a complaint was called into a third-party service, that that complaint would be registered as valid and true, whereas the system we have right now is if a neighbor calls in and says, you know, they've left their garbage cans out over their three days, we have to have code enforcement go out and see, "Yes, indeed, the garbage cans are out, okay, I'm going to give you a warning."
I apologize if, if that was the message that I just conveyed to you, that is not what I meant, they're not going to determine if a complaint is valid. This is really intended to be something that's happening for after-hours, things that are happening on the weekends, so that people don't feel like their complaints are going into a black hole where nobody's able to respond to it, or that they feel obligated to have to contact the police department for something that that third-party vendor can help us to maintain. So if there is a party, they can reach out to that, to that property owner without forcing PD to be in the middle of it. If they need to be there, they will respond, but that does not mean that code enforcement isn't going to go and talk to somebody about moving their garbage cans back, that type of thing.
So these would be unverified complaints that we wouldn't use in future proceedings?
No, we would, we would use them if they were verified.
But you don't have anybody, I mean, you might have somebody come out and verify them, how, I'm, I mean, I guess the issue is that, right now, one of the problems is that, that it's hard, it's very resource-intensive to verify complaints, right? That it, that people are actually violating our ordinance, and it's not just, you know, people who are like, "Oh, I don't like strange cars in my neighborhood, so I'm going to call and make something up," right? So I just don't understand how having, like, we already get complaints that aren't verified, that we don't use in further proceedings against the owner, so why would we, or do we, do we use unverified complaints?
If there is a complaint, it's, code enforcement helps to determine whether or not it can be verified.
Okay.
That would continue to happen in the, for the foreseeable future. It's not that going to this platform is going to supersede any of the work that code enforcement does, it's really intended to be there for the hours that code enforcement is not available. So it's just helping, if there are those after-hours parties, if there's something else that's happening, this is a way for people to get their complaints addressed in a more timely manner. They still have COMCATE, they can still submit any complaints through Ask Arvada, they can still contact us directly with any complaints that they may have, but this is just another means that we have, that right now, we're feeling that there's a gap.
Okay, well, so how do unverified complaints work right now? Like, do they play in at all, or?
I'm going to defer to code enforcement, maybe to speak to that. I can tell you that I hear a lot about things that are happening on some of these properties, and they're not always verified.
Right.
Or they're not always legitimate, let's put it that way. Or, it's addressed really quickly. If somebody left their garbage cans out, and somebody calls code enforcement, and code enforcement goes out there and the garbage cans are moved back where they need to be, it's not a valid complaint. And I think we, as it is with anybody, with any resident or homeowner, and I recognize that short-term rentals are a business, but with any resident, we do want to give them the benefit of the doubt. If they didn't move it, they have a right to remedy that situation. If they don't remedy that situation, code enforcement needs to come in and enforce. So hopefully, that helps to kind of clarify that.
Yeah, I, I appreciate all the thought that's going in to solve the problem, and so I would like to see more about what we do with the unverified complaint information, if it's not actionable at the time that it's called in. You know, if somebody calls in at midnight and says, "Their garbage cans are still out there, and I know the raccoons are going to come," it's like, okay, we're not sending up the police or anybody to deal with the trash cans then, but then, in the next morning, they're brought in, but they did leave them out overnight, that does cause that problem, you see what I'm saying? So I just want to know, like, what is the role of unverified complaints? Because to the citizen's point of view, it feels like we don't trust them, that we don't believe them, that there is an issue with this property that is in their neighborhood that they want something done about.
Understood. And I, I can defer, code enforcement wants to answer that, I don't want to speak for them.
We do still have the complaint, it's all logged in the system, at least, generally. It's, that's why we always tell people, it's very helpful if you give us pictures, so I have proof of what's going on. I appreciate them if they have timestamps, so I know when, what day had everything happened, because that's what we do for our evidence. But I can see, like, when I see a property and I get there, I'm like, "I've been here before." I can look up in my car, like, "How many times have I been here?" And if it's been, like, two or three for the same thing, I'm going to have a conversation with that owner no matter what. Even if they're doing the right thing with the trash can, it's like, "Hey, reminder, here's the rules with the trash, it's not a warning, because it's not a problem right now, but just so you're aware." And even conversations like that fix a lot of problems, so.
Councilmember Davis?
Thank you.
Thank you for this. So, I am a short-term renter, I enjoy going places and staying in, in homes or condos. Oftentimes, the person who's renting the unit doesn't know when the trash is coming. And so, I, if I'm leaving on a Thursday or Wednesday, and my tra, and the trash pickup for that, for that address is the next day, and then you're going and you're issuing a violation to the next renter, it's like, the next renter is going to be like-
The owner.
Right, I know that, but the owner lives in Oklahoma.
Yeah, they'll get the ticket.
And they'll, yes, but it's, it's way after the fact. And then, the next guest is kind of like, "Well, I'll bring them in, but I didn't do this." So that, I think that, that is for the, in, in terms of the end time, on time. And part of that is on the owner to let the, the renter know what's going on, too. But I wanted to back up to the licenses and the fees. So if we have 300 licensees at $150 a license, that's only $45,000. And if we bumped that up to, if we got all 800 licensed, that's $120,000. And if we bumped 800 licenses to $500, that'd be $400,000. Therefore, code enforcement, neither code enforcement nor APD would have to pay for this third-party at $18,000. So I'm, I feel like there is a way that maybe this program can pay for it self in some way. I, it's, it, it just seems like $150 is, is, even though that's what everybody else is doing, it just seems a little low. Even if we could get those additional 800 folks to license their properties, we could bring in enough money to cover having a 24/7 kind of arrangement. I think that we're relying on APD to do some work that I, if they are responding to a very serious event, law enforcement event, they're never going to get to that noise complaint because they're responding to this event. And with them, you know, being shorthanded, I can see where a loud party might not be as important as maybe shoplifting somewhere, or another public intoxication, homelessness. as important as maybe shoplifting somewhere, or another public intoxication, homelessness. So I'm just, I'm trying to come up with solutions where we could maybe fund the program, get more office, code enforcement officers out there thinking varying shifts so that, because nothing ever happens, we all know that pipes don't break at nine o'clock in the morning. They always happen at 2:30 in the morning, and that's when these loud complaints and things like that are happening. And how can we, you know, you can call somebody in Oklahoma about what's happening in Arvada, they're asleep, they're not going to answer their phone. So I'm just, I'm just trying to think of ways that we can have solutions to this. And I'm not being critical of the program. I'm just offering ideas. So thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rupert. Sorry, we have a couple more lights. Councilmember Rupert.
Couple quick ones. One, in your past experience, how effective was the third-party provider in getting what we have as an estimated 800 unlicensed folks?
So Councilmember Rupert, they, in terms of them being able to capture all of the licenses, they're not guaranteeing 100% recapture.
Sure.
They're going to help us to maybe get 75% of them. It's not a guarantee. I think what our code enforcement team is challenged with, everyone is challenged with, when you have an LLC that somebody is changing quickly and is not responding to things, it's hard to enforce. It's hard to force them to get a license, too. But we're going to do the best we can to get as many of them into compliance.
I think we'd be ecstatic with 75%. What's the remedy for those foreign owners, the LLCs that have non-U.S. addresses, or even the addresses that are in another state?
I'm not sure for those that aren't in our country, but the goal is to get them to court. So if they will not comply, then eventually that leads to a summons to come and see us in court.
Okay. And so you can't find anyone to serve summons on? Serve the Secretary of State, and then you, what, you have a judgment against a property?
I'll let code enforcement speak to that. I'm not sure how they deal with it, but I can tell you that it's not easy, and it's also very, very few of our short-term rentals that this is even an issue.
As I said, is it a handful? Generally, they're going to have a registered agent, hopefully, somewhere around here. Getting them to show up is always a problem because they're usually not in Arvada. You know, some have one that's like in Boulder, and I did serve them a summons, and they didn't come. So normally, you would get a failure to appear and a warrant for your arrest, but I can't do that on a business as much as the law says. They're a person, I can't put them in cuffs or anything like that, so I still have that same problem.
No, the registered agent is merely someone you serve summons on, not someone that's going to come out on the property.
Yeah, so it's difficult, so. But a lot of them will at least help me get in contact with the owner. So if I can track somebody down who truly is actually working like they're supposed to as a registered agent, that helps. But a lot of them, you know, handle 100,000 businesses as a registered agent, and they just, whatever, you know? So it's tough sometimes to get somebody, but that is the goal, is to get that owner, or at least somebody on their behalf there.
So have we yet to have success with one of these unidentified ownerships?
Yes, actually, I have. Once I finally got through them, I could get the person, if they were like in Denver, even that registered agent came to court and took the summons and did the, you know, the whole process, and then they fixed the problem for me. So it does work if I get the right one. It's just, I just have to get somebody.
Okay.
Mayor Pro Tim Mormon.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for this presentation and questions. I've got a question that I'm, you know, I'm wondering, it's probably much more of a state issue or handled at the state level, but are you aware of where the rental platforms are required to, before they approve a property, that they have to have a local license to show for, and then they get the approval by the rental platform?
My assumption is that they do not require that.
Right. I'm just curious if there's other states that maybe at the state level have made that requirement, and I don't know what our state law currently is on short-term rental, but it's just, that's why I think it's more of a state issue, but I'm just curious if that's, if you're aware of anything like that.
I am not, but I can certainly try to find that answer for you.
Thank you.
How many slides do you have left, Ms. Garner?
I think I've got like two.
Mr. Marriott, Mr. Pfeiffer, if you'd like to go now, I'm happy, but I would like to maybe get through these slides. Mr. Marriott? All right, please, Ms. Garner.
Okay, thank you. So just wanted to round this one out. What we're looking at for the pilot is it's approximately $18,000 for a year. PD and CED would split that cost. We think it's equally beneficial to both of our teams to give this a shot and see how it works. And then, again, we would come back to the council and propose a more durable engagement with them if this works, and if not, then we will cease contractual obligations with them after a year. This is, actually, at this point, this is what I wanted to discuss with you around third-party contracting, around kind of the lay of the land around short-term rentals. What we now want to get into is offering some considerations for what we would like to propose potentially for the, I apologize, for the ordinance, if we want to make any amendments to our existing code, and get some ideas and feedback from the council. I've already heard from Councilmember Davis that you are interested in us pursuing potentially a higher fee. So we can certainly take that into consideration and bring that back, if that's something that the rest of the council would like to pursue. But in terms of just getting out of enforcement discussion and looking at the code itself, if there are any other questions related to this, I'd be happy to answer them.
Related to, sorry.
Go ahead.
Related to your proposed solution?
Third-party assistance or the lay of the land for short-term rentals.
I mean, so, okay, so let's break that up. So your third-party idea, I mean, you might as well try something. The only feedback I'd give you is making sure that all your data is linking up. I just feel like we're going to get disjointed here, but I, I'm still confused on the complaints of being verifying, like Councilmember Ambrose was saying. I struggle with that one because that's the complaint I think I hear the most is, so I handled, I handled one recently, and they probably know which one I'm talking about, but I did it for my neighbors because they were all calling me, and I just want to go through the process to see what it would be like. And I think the issue, I submitted pictures, which is fine, and it's a timestamp, so he got what he needed. But the issue was, is we won't be out there for two weeks. So I mean, I guess if you have the pictures and you're going to do something about it, I guess that works. But when it was a snow complaint, that was about two feet of snow across their sidewalk for the length of the property, the time you go and verify it, it's melted. Now, granted, it was there for four or five days before you got there to talk about it, but I just want to make sure we're tied in this process. Is it, what causes that two-week, because you mentioned it a couple times, I'm talking to your code person back there.
I'm going to let...
You mentioned it a few times, two weeks, two weeks, two weeks. That must be a standard thing.
I'm going to let him speak to this.
Certain violations have certain time requirements. Most of them are two weeks. Snow and ice is one day. So it's only a 24-hour turnaround, and we have to wait 24 hours after the snow stops. Right. And then we can, once we get a complaint, generally, our surface level agreement is going to be 24 hours. We'll be out there to look as long as it's, obviously, we're here, if it's not a weekend. So I put it in to ask 24 hours later, and I was told two weeks before they would come out. I think it's the generic response that kicks back because most of them are, but snow and ice is 24 hours. Okay. And that's, I'm just showing you, citizen. Yeah, I'll do it. Joblo right here, went through process. Right. And process said two weeks, not 24 hours, even though the law says 24 hours. Just so you know, this is the complaints we get is like, you look like idiots. You're telling me two weeks, and I can't even walk, I can't do my wheelchair down the road because I got to go into a street that's bad. So we need to fix that. That's probably one issue right there. How many people do we have doing, let's just say inspections or code inspections throughout the city? It's not, I think it's not just the two of you.
There's three of us.
Three total with the manager?
No, not counting Nicole.
Okay, so four if she goes out, kind of? Is, and I think we're, I think we can talk offline. I think you and I, we're going to catch up on that. Because, I mean, I'm sure if this is only three to five or 10%, whatever the number is, I'm sure there's a whole bunch of other ones that you're dealing with that are not short-term rentals. So I just have a lot of questions around staffing and response times, but I'll work with the management team on that. Going for the costs, I would support the costs, but I really would like to understand the time, the systems, the expenses that go into doing these, because the code does say that we have the right to inspect as well, and are we even inspecting the property? Probably not. Even the 200 or 300, you're probably not once in a while checking to make sure they're in compliance. I'm sure you just don't have time to do that. Can I safely assume that?
That'd be all I'd do.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, if the, if the nature of the complaint warranted a property inspection, they would go.
You would do it, do it on a complaint base. But I think the statute does say, we have the right, but this is for those that are licensed. Granted, now we have 900 that are not licensed. I think we can talk more general, because you made a comment, Jessica, regarding, you know, it's better to regulate than not. Probably need to listen to the rest of your presentation around that, because I know a lot of cities are banning short-term rentals. They're literally banning them. And I think I worry about, those are 800 homes that are no longer on the market, and we're having all these discussions around affordability and homelessness, but there's now 800 operating as a business in a residential zoning. They don't live on property. So I probably have some comments around that. You know, it's different if it was they were on property and renting out an ADU or they were there versus this is a house that is 100% not owner-occupied, running as a business, charging $2,000 a night, the one across the street's doing that, $2,000 a night to be over there, it's quite a bit of money. I'm sure the one up on the mountains is probably a lot more, because I saw one dot way up in the mountain. And, you know, I think we're missing out on some possible tax revenues involved. Now, I wanted to know what real revenue we're getting off the 2% lodging tax and all the other taxes, but maybe it works out fine. But not having a stable resident who is buying groceries and buying a car and doing all those things at that property, that tax revenue is lost. These people do not come here to come to our malls because we don't have them.
You make an excellent point.
Or ski resort, we don't have, or the Wet n Wilds place, we don't have that. Didn't use its real name. But, you know, I don't have an Elitches in my back, I did use that name, Elitches here. So there's no reason for somebody to just be here to spend their tax dollars. They're here to just do something other outside of the city. So I want us to be thoughtful in this conversation around fees, because I think we're losing out when we don't have it occupied.
Thank you, Councilmember Pfeiffer. I appreciate your comments. And there are, there is a mechanism other cities have pursued to increase fees, and usually, if we're talking about a fee, we would really have to justify that with some type of nexus between, let's say, the number of homes that are being taken out of stock, essentially, for property owners that could use it. We certainly did that in Estes Park, and we're able to determine that there was a clear nexus. I'm not sure that we could do that here. We would have to, we would have to work with a consultant to help us to determine that. They would have to look at all the data and pull it all together. I think just given, just the sheer volume of homes that we have in Arvada versus the number of short-term rentals, it may not justify it, but it might. If, if the council wanted to impose basically a direct fee, if you wanted to look at lodging taxes, that is definitely something that is an option. We certainly looked at that as well, and I know we're not California, but I will say that the community I worked in in California had a 14% lodging tax, and nobody batted an eye. And those were much higher prices than, than Arvada prices at a hotel. So I'm just letting you know, that's not a cost that gets burdened on any of our property owners unless they have a short-term rental, or if they own an accommodations, which technically could be a hotel. So that's something we can certainly talk about. But I think the bigger challenge is, is if we just ban short-term rentals, they don't go away.
Well, and I think our ordinance could be improved upon on some of that. You know, lessons learned, it's always hindsight's 2020, right? So I think this is an opportunity for us to maybe improve that a little bit. I do worry about, you know, eight, 900, 1,200 homes being taken off the market, especially with the conversations we've been having for months now around housing stock. And so, you know, I've gotten an earful the last month. I was, it was kind of nice not to have to deal with this. I was against them in the first place, but then it got, when neighbors start calling, then, and they share their opinions and thoughts, it's exactly what we debated when we, when we had this ordinance in front of us. So it might be a good time to revisit some of that, and I agree, you got to have proof on fees, you know, and it's not that, but maybe it's the taxes associated to it. But I do believe there is a nexus that you can point to, because we don't have, we're a bedroom community, we have nothing for these people to come and do in our neighborhoods that makes it fun, and they're going to go spend money at the local whatever place, because we don't have that whatever place.
I, I agree, although it is unusual. When you, when you actually talk with short-term rental owners, the number of visits they have, they don't necessarily need to be near anything special.
That's true.
It just might be something, I had a former colleague that had a short-term rental in her basement in Erie, rented it out almost every night of the week, and we could not figure out why. There's nothing nearby. It just happened to be a good rental, and there are a lot of people that are out in the market, and they're looking for that.
Well, and the, but the point I'm making is, they're not going and spending their money in our city, they're going somewhere else and hanging out somewhere else and spending their tax dollars elsewhere. So that's where, that's where we're losing that tax revenue is around that.
Possibly, yeah. It's hard to say what they're doing when they're here unless we, we should ask them.
So I will note, a significant chunk of the short-term rental market in Arvada is mostly grandparents visiting their families and their grandchildren.
We're here for weddings or events.
So they do tend to stay a little bit more local.
Yeah, sporting events, that type of thing, that might be very appealing. Let's move on, unless there's any other questions.
Councilmember Davis, do you want to finish the slides, or? Okay.
Okay. Okay, at this point, I'm going to step aside, and I'm going to ask Rosalyn Thompson, she's our principal planner, to come up here and talk a little bit about some ideas that we have been, that we've had. These are also, we've seen this happen in other municipalities, these are things to consider, and we've just got a couple of slides on this. We just want to get your feedback, so.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. So the next two slides are going to discuss potential ordinance changes. The first slide are potential changes related to broad policy considerations, and the second slide are tech-specific changes for clarity and consistency. As for changes related to policy considerations, this slide outlines four potential topics for discussion. So the first is to prohibit renting entire homes for STRs. So currently, the short-term rental ordinance allows entire homes or portions thereof to be operated as STRs. Council may wish to consider prohibiting the rental of entire homes as STRs, instead having just portions of the home being rented as an STR instead of the whole entire home. Another policy consideration is related to owner occupancy. As written, the STR ordinance does not require owner occupancy to operate an STR. In addition to or replacement of a local contact person, the council may wish to consider that owner, that the owner occupies the dwelling unit being used as an STR. The third consideration is changing the maximum number of STR units a licensee may have. Under the current STR ordinance, a licensee may operate up to three separate properties as an STR. So council may wish to consider changing the number of STRs that a licensee may operate. A final and fourth consideration is a change related to accessory dwelling units or ADUs. Under the current STR ordinance, ADUs may be operated as STRs. Council may wish to consider prohibiting ADUs to be operated as STRs. The next slide lists three potential tech-specific changes to the STR ordinance. The first suggested change is referencing Article 4-5 Parking and Loading to ensure that the required parking for STRs meets the dimensional and material requirements of the Parking and Loading article. The second suggested change is introducing a definition of short-term rental and short-term rental unit in the LDC, as that is not currently defined in the LDC. The final suggested change is removing accessory dwelling unit residential and replacing it with accessory dwelling unit for consistency with other section, sections of the LDC. That completes my presentation, and if the council has any questions, I'm available.
All right. Councilmember Davis, you have the first crack.
Sure, thank you. Thanks, Rosalyn. It's been a long... Thank you. So what I thought was really kind of funny, and it might remind you of the Nick Saven commercials, the VRBO commercials, where Nick is actually living in the, in the VRBO, and he says that check-in is at four o'clock, and the renters say it's 3:55, and he says, yeah, I know. And then he's sharing sandwiches and the pool. And I just can't see the owner occupancy portion of that being, being attractive to most, to most renters. Now, your friend renting out her basement, I think that is fantastic, especially if there's a separate entry, but if there's just one common entry, you can see where that would be, wouldn't be as attractive. And then prohibiting different things, I get what we're trying to get to. I just, I'm not sure that I should be telling somebody how to utilize a property that they own. I can understand that we don't want to have loud parties and we don't want trash to be strewn across the neighborhood, but if somebody's doing a great job managing their short-term rental, I don't want to tell them they have to be there during the stay and I don't want to tell them that they can't rent their entire home for that, especially if they're operating in good faith. So I would not support those considerations. But, but the, I wanted to get back to my email that I had. Think that most of my questions, oh, and for comcat, and this is going to be for the code enforcement officers, is there a set of phrases that can be entered, like a set of maybe choices that can be entered into comcat that will, will make STR complaints, allow them to be tracked accurately? I think that might be helpful into the future too. And I think those were all my questions. I got everything else answered. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Marriott.
Thank you. I have a question for kind of code enforcement of anything. Do you know in a year, how many, just rough order of magnitude, how many code enforcement complaints you guys investigate, not just on short-term rentals, but across the spectrum of maybe just residential, not commercial, but just residential?
Don't break it out between residential or commercial. We just don't have a way to do that with our limited system. I know in 2024, I just pulled the numbers, it was about approximately 2,145, I believe.
2,000 complaints total?
Yeah.
Okay. And we've got 20-something that are on, on short-term rentals?
Correct.
So it sounds to me like it's a very small issue. I want to, I want to answer one of the things Mr. Pfeiffer said. Mr. Pfeiffer said, "These people just come here and they're not spending money in, in the community." So I own a short-term rental. I've actually owned multiple ones in the past. Currently, I own one. And I have listed my short-term rental a number of times over the years and I've picked, you know, terms that work for me, price and terms that work for me. The shortest stay, I, I don't allow very short stays, but that's just because I don't want to spend a bunch of time on management. But I want to give a little recap on some of the people who have rented from me and what they've done within our community. So Bernadette and her husband came and stayed a couple of years ago. They came to, because they had recently moved to Colorado, were shopping for a house. They needed a place to stay and they thought staying in a house with their new baby sure beat the heck out of staying in a motel. They stayed for three months until they had bought a house, closed on their house and moved into their new house in Arvada, actually. After them was Joseph. Joseph was employed in the tech field and Joseph was exploring the country. He was trying to live a bunch of different places and see what, what this country was like and where he wanted to spend his future. Joseph stayed for a month. Joseph worked out of his house, really loved Old Town, mentioned it every time I saw him and went skiing every weekend. He was there in the winter. James was the next renter I had. James's company sent him. Originally, they sent him to stay for two weeks. He was a construction superintendent on a large project in Aurora. And when he got on the project there for his first day, they decided his skills were really needed, so they decided to keep him there month to month instead of just the original two weeks they booked for. James ended up staying for nine months. That was several years ago. James now lives in Colorado. He moved back to Chicago and his experience in Colorado was so good that he, he came back here, now lives in Boulder. Danielle was after that. Danielle stayed for a month while she was visiting her mom, who's an Arvada resident, elderly Arvada resident who had surgery and the mom needed help. But Danielle was here with her two young children and didn't want them under, underfoot in her mom's, in her mom's house. Lisa was next. Lisa was there for three months while her and her husband shopped for a new house. After that, Marie came, Marie and her two kids came with her husband while her husband was on a temporary work assignment with Lockheed Martin. They stayed for two months. Sierra was next. Sierra brought her accounting team with her to do a job that they were contracted to do in Denver. And so Sierra and three of her coworkers stayed for two months. Frequent at Old Town, they were great neighbors, I saw them all the time. Paul and his wife next came. They were also touring the country, but they were recently retired, not beginning their career and trying to determine where they wanted to be. They stayed for two months. They originally booked for two weeks and liked it so much, they stayed for two months. Ann was next. Ann came. She was visiting her daughter in Old Town, Arvada, who had just had a brand-new baby. Ann showed up the day after the baby was born. And Ann and her husband stayed in a short-term rental house instead of with their daughter because they live in a very, very small house in Old Town, Arvada, and this made more sense. Joe and Pat were next. Joe and Pat were actually the, the mom and dad of Ann's daughter's husband, so the other side of the family. They stayed next and they stayed for the next two weeks, those two, two teamed up to rent the house. Next was the first under 30-day rental I had and that was just this fall, which caused me to register my short-term rental. And that was Lorena came. Lorena and her family were, had to leave the rental they were in and they were waiting for the next rental they were going to occupy that was taking time to be ready. Lorena and her family was kind of an extended family. They were very apologetic and squeezed into the place and were super-nice folks. I've since hired Lorena and her cleaning company to clean several places for me and they stayed for two weeks. And currently, I have Dave and June staying there. Dave and June were visiting their children when June became ill and she's currently undergoing medical treatment. They have been there for five months now and will be a couple more months until June is well enough to potentially travel back to where they live in Hawaii. And for them, they say it's been a godsend to have something like this available. All of these people spent money in our community, every single one of them. In fact, I, I consider all of these people as valuable members of our community, though some of them are only here short, short times, near as I can tell. I've never heard of a single complaint from any of them like you would find with almost every short-term rental in the city. And when it gets down to it, what you find is a short-term rental is really just a use. It's just a land use. It's, you know, if your neighbor doesn't manage their trash right, does it matter if your neighbor owns the property next to you or rents the property next to you or inherited the property next to you or is a short-term renter in the property next to you? It's a code enforcement issue regardless of the ownership or use of the property. And I think it's, it's easy to kind of, you know, this is an easy target to say, "Well, you know, short-term rental, that's the, that's the thing we can, we can attack," but we're not saying anything about, you know, every neighborhood has that one neighbor you wish their yard were cleaner or their house were better maintained or their trash were put in sooner. And, you know, my experience with short-term rentals has been the expectation of the tenants is quite high. The places always have to look nice or they'll never rent. And the, they're mostly some of the nicer places in the neighborhoods, not, not the worst. So when we get to, you have two slides here that have a couple of questions for us and I just want to weigh in myself on these couple of things. So one of the code considerations could be prohibit renting entire homes as short-term rentals. I would be completely against that. I think I have rented short-term rentals before myself when I've gone on vacation and it's not comfortable for everybody to stay in someone else's house while they're there. It's already fairly uncomfortable to stay in somebody else's house, but certainly if they're roaming the halls too, that's a huge disincentive and I think makes no sense. Requiring owner occupancy during short-term stays, same thing. Change the maximum number of short-term units? I wouldn't think a change like that is warranted unless we're have, actually having trouble with short-term rental owners owning multiple units and the inability to manage them. Otherwise, that just seems like a punitive action. And also, it would probably make it harder on us because people who were determined to do it would just hide them behind more and more layers of, of LLCs or other structures and, and I don't think you gain anything. In fact, I think I'd rather have them all together rather than split them all up. Prohibit renting accessory dwelling units as STRs? I would absolutely not do that. In fact, that's one of the better case scenarios for short-term rentals is, is in an ADU because then the property owner is there because our ADU ordinance requires that the property owner live on-site, either the main or the ADU, to have an ADU in the first place. So if you've got an ADU, it means it's that you live in one of them and renting the other one as a short-term rental would be actually ideal. I think that's what everybody would want, not, not wouldn't want. So I, I certainly wouldn't do that. As far as other land development code considerations, you know, requiring on-site parking space? Sure, I think we do that already. We do certainly do that with ADUs. I think it'd be fine to do that with short-term rentals. But again, it didn't appear to me that these complaints that we receive are because people are parking in the wrong spots. Maybe there's been one and maybe if you have a big crowd showing up. But, you know, our ordinance already doesn't allow large gatherings and so I think that's, you know, if, if we want to include parking requirements, I think that's fine. Definitions, I have no, no problem with that. And, and, you know, eliminating ADU references to something else, I think is totally fine. So that gets me to the last, to the last part. And the last part is, and there's talk of, of fee and I hear, you know, if we can get, you know, if we can double the price and then we can make more of them come in and then we double the price again. I mean, shortly, we can solve every financial problem every organization has if we can just double the price often enough and bring enough people into it. It doesn't seem to me that that makes any sense. I think the fee, I agree with you, Ms. Garner, that the fee should be relevant to the activity being done. Fees are not to raise revenue for the, for the organization to use for other purposes. The fee has to be, you know, commensurate with the cost of the organization. You know, $150 was $150, what's $100 was $50, what is $200? I think all of those probably fall in the realm of, of reason. I think, you know, if you, if you stray outside of that, I think you run the risk of being on the wrong side of the, of whether this is a fee or a tax. And I think, you know, for those who would like to, you know, make short-term rentals pay, make them pay their way, generate revenue in excess of what it takes to, to manage short-term rentals, should put it on the ballot for the citizens to vote on like every tax proposal is required to do. And, and I think that would be a plenty fair way to go about it, but contriving a fee that's in excess of what it takes to operate the program for the city doesn't make any sense. And then lastly, and I said lastly, but I'm going to say lastly one more time, the, I'm all for a third-party assistance. I think the, the least desirable outcome here would be for the city to ban short-term rentals because then we just have eight or 900 short-term rentals anyway. We don't know who they are and we don't have much regulatory authority other than whatever challenge might come with trying to identify a short-term rental and try to put an end to it. And I can tell you that I would guess in your original slide where you show eight or 900 short-term rentals in Arvada, my guess is that's not eight or 900 short-term rentals that are continuously operating. That's probably eight or 900 short-term rentals that at some time or another have. I suspect that a number of short-term rentals that operate in Arvada operate sporadically, whether, you know, the residents of that property maybe leave for the winter and they short-term rent their place when they do, or, you know, somebody gets married, moves in with somebody and they short-term rent the place for a while until they figure it out. I would suspect that they're sporadic and not constant. And I think having an unregulated environment is the wrong approach. We had that before, which is why we took the, the, the action that we did to bring these things into compliance. And I think if a third-party can bring more of them into compliance, I see that's a, that is a very good thing. I would, you know, if it were me, I would have the short-term rental program fund the cost of the third-party. So I, I don't think I would lay that on the police department. I think the police department's, you know, they've got plenty of very good things to spend their money on and, and I think this program ought to pay for itself and, you know, you can start splitting hairs about how much, how much does it generate and how much does already cost and what additional cost does this add on. But, you know, even if the short-term licensees went to 500 at $150 a piece, that's $75,000. If the contractor was getting 18 of that, that's still more money than there currently is to manage a program. And it doesn't appear to me that the city's costs for managing the program would change much. So I would, I would have the, you know, the program pay a reasonable fee to do that. I think a third-party is a good idea. I think a 24/7 hotline for people to come and I think to, to call and, and, you know, clearing house for complaints and, and I think, I think that's a good thing. And, you know, my hope would be, I, I absolutely know that there are places where people are intolerant of short-term rentals that are near them. Some of them may be warranted and some of them maybe not. I mean, we see that in every neighborhood. I think in Lake Arbor, there's neighbors that are intolerant of a neighbor who burns wood to heat his shop. I mean, we have neighbors all over the, all over the city that are intolerant of each other for different reasons. And I wouldn't put short-term rentals in any kind of a special category to be not tolerated, you know, by residents. And I think everybody should follow the rules and we should enforce the rules fairly without, you know, discriminating on it's this use or that use. So that's all, that's what I have to say.
Councilmember Rupert.
I think my beginning point is who it is that we're trying to protect or to benefit. And primarily, this is regulated simply because we want to protect all of the people in these neighborhoods that bought a home in a residential area and there is a use that isn't a normal residential use. It's got more traffic, it has different uses. And it isn't the sort of folks that, that John described that necessarily give rise to the issues. It's the, it's the houses that get rented and then there's a party suddenly and, and Bob gets called at 2:00 a.m. And so I, I think it, it's important that we keep in mind, we're trying to protect all of the people that reside in the area. I think it's certainly fair that we want to preserve as much as we can the rights of the owners to use their properties as they will so as they're not infringing on the rights of those around them to enjoy their properties as they intend. So I, I don't necessarily want to get rid of the whole program. I think it's a benefit to families. I think it's a benefit to the folks that have perhaps a, a mother-in-law apartment or another sort of ADU that they can have an additional revenue on. So I don't want to get rid of the whole program entirely. But we've got to do a better job of tracking down those that aren't getting licensed. We've got to do a better job of having immediate compliance on those that aren't following the rules and are disturbing their neighbors. So I'm in favor of doing a third-party contract to see if that can get us down the road on both those fronts. Regarding the first five suggested alterations, I don't, I don't think it makes sense for us to prohibit particular behaviors like these necessarily because I don't think they actually get to the crux of the problem. And so I, I don't think these necessarily make much sense. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Pfeiffer, quickly, do you have questions?
No.
Okay. Well, they, they do, but I actually have questions. Thank you. So tradition says I go last, but sometimes I want to actually get the questions in before all the comments are made. So quickly, do we know what the vacancy rate is at the two hotels, the Marriott Renaissance as well as the Hilton Garden Inn? No, I do not. I, I do believe that they are very high. It would be useful to, to know these numbers, but if I recall, they are doing quite well. And the ability to have this in the market probably fills a certain gap. It does lead me to the questions about the lodging taxes you mentioned, Ms. Garner. And let me be clear, this is a conversation the council needs to have at another time as well as with the community. But just for the community's awareness, Arvada has amongst the lowest lodging tax rates in the region, lower than all of our adjacent neighbors. So that is certainly something we need to look at in terms of the ability for these properties to quote, "pay their own way." properties to, quote, "pay their own way." In terms of another question, have we looked at, I know we're looking at a third-party contractor, a vendor, which is great. Have we worked with the major suppliers, the Airbnb, the VRBO, for their assistance of what programs they have available?
Thank you, Mayor, for the question. I can tell you from past experience, it is not worth it. It is really difficult to work with each one of them. Sometimes they're very resistant to want to provide that information. So Airbnb especially can be very tricky to work with. So largely because there are so many platforms, that if we work with one, they just shift it to another. We really like that comprehensive, somebody has got their eye on all of the rental platforms.
Oh, I absolutely agree. What I was thinking is, we might be, instead of asking them for information, but maybe it could be potential to ask them for a favor. If somebody's licensing or renting on your site, ask them when they register. Are you compliant with the city code? Or to send postcards to all of their vendors, since awareness seems to be a huge problem. Oh, I didn't know. Are they able to do something where they're able to send a postcard to everybody who rents on their site, saying, "Are you registered?" So I don't know what programs they have available. I believe I've heard of things like that, so it'd be worth asking, I think.
We can certainly look into it, but I would say that the amount of time trying to herd that cat might be as much time as having a third-party vendor that can just categorically look at everything.
Okay, great. And then quickly, you have changed the maximum number of STRs. The current maximum is three, right?
Yes.
Okay. I was just verifying that information. And then I'll move to other members' comments before I give my own. But I did have two ideas. So looking at the code, if we go back a few slides to codes, the most common verified complaints, it's trash bins and snow and ice removal. These are nuisance things. They are not ill-intentioned. Now, obviously, they do impact the quality of life with their neighbors. So I do know that when people list on these platforms, they have to have cleaning fees, right? As a frequent user of Airbnb, they all have cleaning fees. And so I'm wondering if as part of, when they do their licensing application, we can have some kind of thing, what is your snow removal plan? Now, I will say, every unit charges a cleaning fee, and what they say is, a lot of them will come in and do it themselves, and they'll pocket the difference. But a lot of them will also have plans to contract with a professional cleaning service. So we could task the owner of the unit to, either they have to do it themselves within 24 hours, or they have to contract with a local snow removal. But either way, just like with a cleaning fee, they know it has to be done, and they're pre-planned for it. And then, so that's one idea I have. And then the other, with the trash bins, to Councilmember Davis's very correct point, if trash bins on Thursday, but you're checking out Wednesday, it may just get lost in the shovel, shuffle. So the city's trash service with Republic has the ability to sign up to where your bins are picked up by the drivers. And I know Crush also offers this service to their customers. Others may as well, I'm not sure. But what I'm thinking is, is if, just like with the other, if we can have them have all enroll in a service that will come and pick up their bins, we can make it part of the license, then the guests never have to worry about putting it down, they don't have to think about it, they just put the trash in the bins, and the drivers will come and get it every single time, probably eliminating this nuisance error that we are consistently hearing from. So just a couple of ideas there on that front. Now, before I give my comments on the ideas, I will turn it over to the rest of the council members. Mayor Pro Tim Mormon, you are next.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, based on the data that was presented this evening, I think that it makes sense to look at the third-party vendor, and to help us tighten up on the number of unlicensed. So I think I see that as one of the biggest problems. And then dealing with these complaints that we've been talking about this evening. I agree with my fellow council members that the land development code considerations, I don't feel like are going to help address the immediate problems that we're talking about right now. So I am not necessarily in favor of the ones on the screen here, one through four at this point. But I do think trying to get the third-party vendor online and seeing if that helps with some of the current issues, I think that's a first important step for us right now.
Councilmember Mormon, are you comfortable with the other land development code considerations on the following page?
I see those more as cleanup, and I think that that makes more sense.
Okay, thank you.
The first four seem a little more drastic changes that I don't see are necessary at this point, until we get more compliance with our licensing and seeing if we can tighten up the enforcement piece.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ambrose.
Yeah, so I have a question. You, people need to apply for a short-term rental license, whether it's for under 30 days or over 30 days, right?
That I don't know. Sorry, I can defer.
No, greater than 30 days is a long-term renter, and we don't require any license for that.
Okay, so most of the stories that Counselor Marriott you shared were long-term rentals, not short-term rentals.
So they, almost all of them started as a short-term rental, but, or they, their intention was, and they ended up being longer than that. But I think that's, I think my experience there is not completely unique. Mine might be a little different, because I don't host two-night stays, or three-night stays, or weekend stays.
Okay, because most of the people I have calling, complaining are not about people who are staying for a month or more. And so maybe if the ordinance can address this. I am amazed that you only got 24 complaints, because I got 13 of those complaints from email alone, and that's not counting phone calls, about five different properties of short-term rentals in 2024. So it's amazing to me that over two-thirds people are calling me. But I think there are more short-term rentals in my district generally. So I think that's why I'm getting the bulk of the phone calls and the complaints about these short-term rentals and what it's doing to the neighborhoods, because the more affordable houses are on my side. And comments-wise, according to our housing needs assessment, we are short 2,790 units for just renters. So that's the amount of affordable units that the city of Arvada doesn't lack, and having 800 of them for short-term rentals, which is less than 30 days, not long-term rentals, seems to be adding to the housing affordability crisis. Now, I will say that the same housing needs assessment that our city did in '24 that I am quoting says that it doesn't believe that short-term rentals are an issue, but it says there's only 530, and you're saying there's over 800 now. So it seems like it's kind of that point in time, sort of, when is it available and not available? But I find it interesting that the same housing needs assessment says 24%, so a quarter of short-term rentals are renting for 271 to 365 nights. So that means we know that a quarter of the short-term rentals in Arvada are in violation of our ordinance, because they shouldn't be renting for more than 240 nights. And then 19% are renting from 181 to 270 nights. So we have up to 43% of short-term rentals violating our ordinance of being for less than 240 days. And I think that is a problem for people who want to, you know, to be able to enforce this, to be able to follow our laws about what is going on. And so, and the amount of people who are having complaints of a highly transient neighborhood, of people coming in through where there's a higher concentration of short-term rentals. I have been in short-term rentals myself. I do think it's a lovely option. I think that what is happening is it being concentrated in one part of town where people are, don't like the what it's doing to their neighborhoods. And so I would support at least an owner-occupied ordinance, because one of the key problems you frequently said is that when you go to a rental, that you don't know where the owner is. They're behind LLCs. You can't contact or resolve it. And I think when Airbnb started, it was bed and breakfast. The idea was, you were in somebody's house. And so if there was an issue with trash or noise, there is somebody on the property who can immediately resolve that. But having people who are out of state, out of town, who aren't John Marriott, who you can call up and say, "Hey, what's going on with your renter? There seems to be trash overflowing in the street," and you know, and you can find them, that system works. But when you don't have the person on the property, and I have residents, one place has called eight times, and this actually, this one property, it's going on 16 months. I think it's like day one, I got contacted about this property, and they still have not had a satisfactory resolution on this one property. And it isn't just one person, although this one person did send me like five. There's three different people in this neighborhood who have said, "Something has to be done about this rental." And that's just too long of a time to have a problem property where we can't take any actionable enforcement against them. And so I really do think that an owner-occupied policy at least would help with a lot of the enforcement issues that we are having with it. And I think it has to be undercounted with the ComCate system, because I can't believe that over two-thirds of your calls have come from my email desk alone for District 2 of what is going on with short-term rentals in our neighborhoods.
And I did note, thank you, Councilmember Ambrose, that, again, we're trying to capture all the incidents. It's not easy on ComCate to put in the right keyword. So we're doing the best we can. We will try to do that better. I do think having a third-party is going to help us with short-term rentals in general, and hopefully that will become a more attractive mechanism for people to submit complaints. But we will continue to capture these, whether it's ComCate or whatever service we wind up using in the future that might do a better job.
And you, and this third-party servicer, you think will also be able to enforce if people are doing rentals over 240 days of the year?
They look at rental monitoring activities. So they're going to be able to see how many days that property has been rented. And they can look at all the platforms. So if they're trying to hide it on one, and they're not putting it on another, they'll likely find it.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Ambrose, can I make one clarification? Our code enforcement officer was talking about unlicensed properties and not being able to track someone down. When someone's licensed, they have to provide us their contact person. So we actually have that as part of the license as well. So we should be able to find that person. Now, of course, there is always a chance that that person could change, but our ordinance does require that they have to make that change on their license within seven days. So there's, we just want to clarify.
Right.
I think the first issue being all these unlicensed properties, right? That's the one where, once we can get them licensed and get those contact names, that's at least one more tool we have in trying to do enforcement.
Right. And right now, it's like about two-thirds are not licensed.
Even possibly less. But again, as Councilmember Marriott pointed out, that just because they're on the services or on that map, doesn't mean that they're active, doesn't mean that they're active the whole year. So we really, I think it's hard, because we don't have a great idea of what's out there. And that's the hope that this contractor could start to dive into that. I will tell you, from my personal experience in Denver, the platforms, it does tell you that Denver requires a license, but it doesn't stop you from posting your property without that license. They have a third-party contractor who then immediately is scanning all of the platforms and then contacts. But it isn't Airbnb doing it. But they do have at least, when you're in certain jurisdictions, saying, "Check your local jurisdiction." So that is something that at least Airbnb has done. But it's still then, the city of Denver has a third-party contractor that does the enforcement similar to what Ms. Garner is describing.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Pfeifer.
So Councilmember Rupert stated it correctly. Who are we protecting? Well, obviously, our constituents who live here. To this day, I've always struggled with the fact that we've allowed a business to operate inside a residential zoning. However you want to define it, to me, there's no one living there, it's just a business. So that, I struggle with it. So to answer your questions on all this, I'm good with what everyone's suggesting here. You know, the first four, I agree. I mean, it's going to be difficult on some things, and your cleanup, I think you called it cleanup language on your second slide, that's fine. But I will say, so Colorado Springs has an ordinance that says they're not allowed in single-family zoning. And any other zone can have them, but they have to be 500 feet from each other. They can't get them clustering, which that's what we're starting to see here, is clustering, active or not, it doesn't matter, it's clustering if something's happening. They also tax all cleaning as well. So if there's a cleaning fee of 25 bucks, it also gets the lodging tax. And so, yeah, no single-family zoning, which I would support, because that makes sense to me. You know, apartments and multifamily, and that, maybe that's a zone that would be better. They have to have their business license with the state, which I'm sure we do as well, one way or another, I'm sure. We should collect this first, before we let them, give them a license. And then obviously, get their sales tax license if they're not doing it through, I guess, a company. But we should be making sure that they're compliant. And any business license we require, they should also be doing all that before we even apply. You know what I mean? They should have all this submitted to you before they even get it. I don't know what our process is. Do they require all that first, before we approve it?
Yes, they do have to have their business license, and they do not have...
And their tax license, and, okay.
Yes.
All right.
While the city does collect taxes, that is also...
So something the third-party contractor could help with, if we opt to go that way. It's kind of an added thing that we could explore in the future, if the finance director would like us to.
And I agree, the Airbnb seems to be the one that's talking most. Hey, that's at least a step. I mean, if you can get it on their website to do that. But I still think that single-family zoning should not have them, but...
Thank you. Councilmember Davis.
Thank you, and thank you for all of this really important information. And I appreciate the comments from my colleagues. So having somebody in the dwelling, the owner occupancy, I can tell you that right now, I have a friend who's TDY. She's in the service. She wants to keep her property here in Arvada. And so she went through all the permitting, she didn't skip any of that. And her parents do the cleaning of the house, because they live here. But she wanted to keep her house, she didn't want to sell it, but she didn't know how long she was going to be TDY, and now she'd be coming home at any moment. But I think that's, every situation is different. Oh, TDY means she's on temporary duty, for those of you who are not in the service. So, so every, if you have somebody who's going to, elderly parents who decide, "Let's go see what it's like to be in Belize." But they want to keep their house here, because maybe they don't like Belize, and they want to come back eventually. But they also may need the income for the house to maintain the home, and they decide to go in this direction. I don't want to prohibit them from doing so. So, you know, like I said, every situation is different, and I just want to make sure that we don't have, somebody doesn't have to share the hot tub with me when I go to their house. Again, Nick Saban, no one else is getting this but Brian.
I got it.
Okay, good. So that's just, you know, my two cents. And I do know that there are situations where people do, they have to leave for a period of time, and they, but they ultimately want to come back to Colorado, they want to come back to Arvada. And this is a lovely opportunity to allow them to do so.
Thank you, Councilmember.
So I will go now. For those who are unfamiliar, I had last night's Super Bowl. Former Alabama head coach Nick Saban had a very funny commercial with VRBO. So look it up on YouTube if you didn't get to see it last night, it was pretty entertaining. So I tend to agree with the majority of the council. I think going with the third-party vendor is a fantastic idea. I ran some quick numbers, and if they, 75% would be amazing compliance rate. Even if they were to secure 50% at the current rate of $150 for an annual license, we're looking at $45,000. 75% is going to be significantly north of that, up to $90,000. And I was even looking, if we looked at it, up to $200. So you said, correct me if I'm wrong, the rate is 150 to 300 average in our area?
Yes.
So $200 is on the lower end of the total range there. And if we were to do that, if we were to look at a 75% success rate of compliance, that's $120,000 at $200. Now, to Councilmember Marriott's point, correct, we're not looking to make a profit off this. Rather, I think not only could that pay for this contract, but it could support our team in the registration, enforcement of these measures. Code, I want to thank you guys for everything you do. You're probably the, I would always say, you're one of the hardest-working and least-recognized departments in the city. When you guys show up, nobody's happy. So just thank you all so much for what you do and how hard you work to enforce our city. It really is an important job, so thank you for that. So these resources could not only support the administration of the program, but it could also support our code team as they look at how to best enforce on the problem properties, chasing down forward LLCs. That's one thought I have, is perhaps no LLC ownership. This was something I recall we discussed in the original hearing. We debated about if we were to allow LLCs. And I'm not saying, you know, at the time, we allowed it. I'm not saying we shouldn't, I'm not recommending, but I would like us to maybe look at that again. How many of these are LLC versus individual proprietor-owned or family?
these are LLC versus individual proprietor-owned or family-owned? And what is the right? How many are local Arvada businesses versus elsewhere, et cetera? I'd like to see us have meaningful fines for properties that are repeat offenders. Like if you, if you've been busted for having a few parties now, obviously, we should probably be yanking your license. But if we're not, we need to be serious. The penalties need to, you know, actually have consequences. I 100% support Councilmember Pfeifer's recommendation of looking at Colorado Springs's ordinance regarding clustering in neighborhoods. You know, I recall, because I was District 2 Councilmember before Councilmember Ambrose, there is a street in District 2 that has three Airbnbs on it, and it's a small street. I can't remember exactly where it is, but that's a lot when you're trying to protect the character of your neighborhood. So perhaps reducing the number, maybe one per, one per block or something like that, could help us control this somewhat. And as a former HOA president, where you couldn't have more than three units rented out, when that fourth person came, they were unhappy when they were told they were out of luck, but they were still out of luck. And then finally, we could also examine caps on the total number in the city. I do think there is a valid concern about this gobbling up our housing stock. And this is becoming a more and more attractive option for those who own second properties. And I 100%, 100% support Councilmember, Councilmember Davis's correct point that everybody has unique circumstances and we need to, we as a city, need to acknowledge that and be open to that. But I also want to make sure it's not getting out of control. And it has in some markets. Arvada hasn't seen that. But I will say, when we had this hearing three years ago, we never thought that there would be 900. That just wasn't sort of on the radar. So the markets really changed some. And I just want to make sure we're able to kind of keep parameters around that. Otherwise, I just reiterate the ideas about making sure property owners have, like, set arrangements for snow removal, just like they do with cleaning removal. I think that's important. Doesn't matter if they do it themselves or they contract. They just have to have those plans in place and ready to trigger if there's a storm. And then I like the idea that they have to, with trash bins, get the services that will come and pick up. If it's a city service, it's a, if it's a private service. We could just, with a few small tweaks of our ordinance, probably clean up these nuisance ones that are plaguing code and that are, frankly, just, for the vast majority of people, innocent mistakes. Nobody means any harm. So with that, 100% support moving forward with the contractor. Great job, job to you and your team, Ms. Garner, for bringing this forward. And for all the research and work done to now. And look forward to seeing how this works. And, you know, as with everything, we, we tweak things as we go along. We, we never get it 100% right, certainly not the first time, but we modify it as we go. And so it's just the natural, organic time to be doing that anyway. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right. With that, I will open us to the second public comment portion of this evening's agenda. Is there anyone in chambers who wishes to give public comment at this time? Seeing none, open it to council comments or... Councilmember Rupert.
Just one I wanted to report. I met with Superintendent Dorlan last week. And one, I appreciate the partnership with the district and the city and rec. district on the pool. I think that's been a, a good success. And I certainly hope that's serving our community and the people in our community for 60 or 80 years to come. That would be a great thing. And so I just wanted to share that she's looking forward to working together. We've had school closures. That's an issue. What to do with school buildings, that remains an issue. And she's interested in input in those areas.
Great. All right. Seeing no other lights for council comments, I'll turn it over to Ms. Haley.
Thank you. A couple of really quick comments. First of all, are you all aware this, this is our very last Monday council meeting?
Oh, wow.
I know. We didn't bring cake.
Oh, my goodness.
We didn't bring cake. Yeah, this is our last Monday council meeting. Next Monday is the holiday. The following Monday is your board and commission's interviews. And so with that, our March meeting begins on Tuesday, March 4th. So I'll see you then. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Ms. Haley. Ms. Morris?
Nothing from me, Your Honor.
All right. With that, we stand adjourned.